You need to be plugged in.
Uh, no.
You good?
My laptop. Oh, no, this is good. Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order at seven oh four.
Hi.
Pardon allegiance.
Pardon allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Paul, Nathan?
Here.
Carl. Ken's here. Mary?
Here.
Gary? All present? Oh, rule of the agenda. Are there any changes?
I do have a few.
I do as well.
You go first, Gary.
Okay, well, uh, since the agenda is supposed to be an outline of what we're supposed to cover, I, my opinion there is, there's a lot of stuff in here that doesn't need to be here. And what I'm particularly talking about is starting with, uh, public hearing list concerns, K one. Uh, we have that, uh, we have that letter that was submitted. So I don't believe we need everything from K one all the way down through to all okay. All the way to seven, zoning ordinance, A to one, then their reasons, uh, text amendment, whatever, and your criteria related to the change, that's, I believe that's, uh, not needed in this. This is a, uh, this is a encyclopedia. It's not a, it's not a format I don't think is good for, or even needed for an agenda.
Well, we are gonna have to generate a list of points that he has in the letter that we have to discuss. I've given you a copy of an example of the things that he had in this letter. So you can eliminate whatever you want, but we will, as a board, have to generate a list.
Well.
We have a letter that has concerns. Those concerns have to be addressed.
The letter, we can, we can do that.
Good.
But I don't think it all needs to be in the agenda.
Then you can eliminate, uh, anything besides, uh, a list of points made by Mary from it? And then we could add all that in and, and we could talk about how we, uh, handle the, uh, here.
Fine.
What else?
Uh. I think we can talk about the text amendment changes, but I don't think all this other information in here with all the strikeouts and all the red, uh, if that's needed, right?
Well, the, the first one is what was in the text amendment and showed what the changes were. The next one is the recommended changes is taking the same text and adding, adding what would clear up what I think they're trying to do. What I'm trying to tell you is, is that foundations back in the day used to be discourting around a mobile home.
I, I know. I, I, I read your email. I, I get it. And, and we can talk about that if you want. I, I just don't think it's.
It should be in the minutes, not the agenda.
Right. Exactly. Thank you.
Okay, we'll end up talking about it, but that's fine. Take out whatever you want. Take it all off.
What we need to talk about, if we do any, any, uh, any motions, the motions and that should be in the minutes, like Kara says. But this other, this other stuff in here doesn't need to be in the, in the agenda.
So M one, you wanna keep the same. M two, you just wanna keep the township board will consider the text amendment foundation change.
Correct. I, I, I was gonna say, I have a, I have a proposal for that because I, I feel the same way. In, in items K and M, I believe that there are supervisor comments in those agenda items. And I don't think an agenda is a place for, for comments to be made. That happens in discussion and voting. So I would make a motion, well, I don't know if we need a motion for this, but I think we should strike any personal comments from items K and M where, um, where there are some. Are you good, Gary? Or do you have, do you have any more?
Yeah, that, yeah, I mean.
I have, I have a couple other ones. Um, there's four sections for public comments in this agenda, and I'm just wasn't sure. We've never had that before, and I don't know if that was an error, but typically we usually open and end with public comments, but there's four different sections for public comments, so I'm not sure if that's. Well, I love to hear from everybody. I don't know if we need four separate, uh, rounds of that. Um, on item J, um, I did send an email to the board, but I do think it's worth clarifying that this is not a public hearing tonight. We got clarification from that from our attorneys. It is simply a hearing. Our citizens have the right to request a hearing on any particular matter, but this is not a public hearing tonight. So I think that should be corrected in the minutes as well, or the agenda as well. And then I have two suggestions, I guess. Um, I think that items N four, O three, and O four seem out of order to me. Uh, we're being asked to consider and vote on issues that before we have other information on different issues. So it seems like we should discuss N four last, O four first, O three second, and then vote on N four. Because otherwise we have limited information when we make our vote. And then my last one is I would again like to add the topic of having attorneys present at our meetings.
Um, can you repeat that N four part?
Well, these of course are all up for, uh, this is just my opinion. I think N four, O three, and O four are out of order on our agenda.
What order do you?
So I'm, I'm proposing that we reorder them and do O four first, O three second, and four third.
Any other comments on the agenda?
I'd like to add an item. I'd like to add an item that we discuss, um, dissolving the zoning until we can get it together and start all over again. Becoming, I'd like to discuss it with what people are thinking.
Where do you like that?
Anywhere you want. I just think it needs to come up for discussion and what that would mean for our township.
Mary, you said dissolve zoning?
Yes.
Do you wanna make that the first thing in the new business?
Yes. Sure.
Well, Paul, you're gonna have to help me with the agenda tonight.
I'll help you out.
Um. Can I get someone to make a motion on our agenda with all the changes?
I might need it.
Well, you got it already.
Well, I think I do, but.
I'm just gonna ask Kara, do you have it squared away as far as you know?
Uh, yeah. You want me to read it?
I think maybe for clarification.
Okay, Gary to remove, let me pull it up just so I can re, look at it. Gary would like to remove, um, pretty much in K one, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and all the text below, the main point. Um, for M, remove all the verbiage, but keep like the main first sentences, like those titles. Um, for the public comment, you just wanna have the public comment on the agenda. Do we need a public comment on the hearing part?
On the what?
The letter is for coming.
Right, the letter is the.
So just take out the other, the two extra public comments. Um, you wanna?
Just, I think he wants you to take out, read public right there. And just say, hearing of the text amendment.
Yep, that's next. Um, so then take out that public and just change it to hearing.
Yeah.
And then reorder O four, O three, and four is the correct order. You wanna add attorneys to be present at meetings, the discussion? And Mary would like to add item to dissolve zoning until it can be visually rectified.
Um, I'd like to just discuss what our township would like, look like without it.
Okay. That's what I got.
I think you got it. Good job. I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say hi.
Hi. Nick?
Concern agenda. Uh, any discussion on the, uh, check register?
Of course. According to this, public comments.
Did I miss that? Oh, yeah, I put that.
Keeping in, right?
Yeah, you gotta be confused here. Public comments, it shouldn't be for items on agendas for anything. Karen?
Yes. Um, I agreed with some of the comments about shortening the agenda to be more of an outline. Uh, most professional organizations do it that way to, simply to conduct efficient meetings. Each board member has opportunity to personalize their own report and debate their own opinion during deliberation, but no one's opinion could carry more weight than any other, which happens if you put too much in there. Um, I was glad to get a Life EMS report. It looked satisfactory. Um, who wrote the ordinances for battery storage and solar energy? Doesn't that have to originate through the planning commission? The township is currently left vulnerable at a time when important ordinances are underway. Uh, Jason and Cheryl Bull have both served faithfully. Both wrote letters of interest, including commitment of continuing education. Both have background information about ongoing issues and both qualify for holding over to maintain a full panel. As a, I think of myself as a logical citizen, I request that supervisor put any political motives aside and accept our attorney's suggestion to simply clean this up by reappointing uh, both Jason and Cheryl Bull to the planning commission. And only after that is settled, should you really be entertaining anyone new for Anita's seat. It is always disruptive when PC members change. I've always respected Ken's willingness to work hard, but I often feel that he is out of touch with the majority of citizens. I'm glad you're doing a survey, and I cannot support obstruction or abuse of authority at any level. Over the past few months, Supervisor Spicer has taken out an ad against the passage of the text amendments, interfered with the normal course of the proposed text amendment at the county, has delayed putting amendments on the agenda, has moved to appoint himself as ex officio board rep to the PC, has argued with our legal counsel about it, has written a dissenting opinion, and on a separate idea, but still kind of going above and beyond, um, assigned himself to write a capital hermit project without first getting input from the board or the PC. And I'm not sure if you even got, um, consultation with the fire chief before he wrote that. Um, I do see a tendency to confuse important matters with minutia detail. That it makes it hard for everybody, which is part of the reason I also support the idea of an attorney at the meetings to clean it up.
Any other public comment?
I don't know. You want me to go now? It's very, very related, or if you wanna put me at I point seven point eight? Would you like me to speak now? For those that don't know me, my name is Jeremy Roberts, Deputy Fire Chief, uh, right here at, uh, Columbia Township. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry, that too. So local here. Um, real quick, I've got a bachelor's degree in public safety. I've got a master's degree in workforce educational development and leadership. Um, I currently work for the fire service twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. It's my daytime job. It's my nighttime job. It's what I dream about. Same way, same way with JC, except for he has a moment there where he actually prays for the fire service as well. So, uh, there's that. And, and you had a lot of good starts on the discussion earlier at, at, at the budget meeting. Uh, and it's important that it, you realize the direction of your leadership. So the township board gives the direction. This is where we're going. Then your department heads sail the ship. And the people that work underneath the department heads are the casting crew. Makes sense that, right? That, that's typically how that works, and that's how it works in a professional way. Uh, if there's questions about the service that you provide, I, I'm the caregiver, but you are the ones that provide the service on behalf of the township president. You need to speak to the head about that. Uh, you need to work together to get your research. You can't freelance this. You even, you even mentioned something to that effect where you're going off on your own to gather information without the rest of the board's approval. You gotta, you gotta, you gotta be very transparent with each other. Hey, I may not agree with what you have to say, but at least I know where you're at. Um, so that's a transparency, I think, that we need to go. All right. So with that, here's what we got. I got a phone call last week from, uh, a couple of firefighters from a neighboring department saying a township board member was there, uh, and addressed them as a township board member, not as citizen Jan or Joe, but as a township board member. And then started asking questions, which is not a problem, but if it is outside of your knowledge and they're asking, I identify as a board member. Now you are working as a public servant. Your voice is your vote. Your power is your vote. Now you're working outside of that to gather information that nobody else knows about. And you're not asking the right questions. I love Lumendale Fire. The firefighters over there are some of my greatest friends, and I love them to death. But they don't know Columbia. They only know them because that's what they do. You've gotta know that that's extremely embarrassing, especially when, uh, they're brought up the idea that I personally would be unsafe on scene with a cadet program. And that they, and I don't know if the board, the rest of the board knows this, that that person has addressed a lawyer about the cadet program. You know that cadet programs are what I, I, uh, I consult across the entire state of Michigan about cadet programs. That's what I do for a living. Cadet fire program. Accusing me of putting that cadet into it, or those cadets into what we call an ideal H atmosphere, which is immediate danger to life, health atmosphere, when that was not the case. I encourage you to learn those assets that you have. Your cadet program is a valuable program and one of the best in the state of Michigan. Uh, I would encourage you to ask more questions about it. Why? Because you signed it. You signed approval of that cadet program. And the fact that you don't have that paperwork is shameful, that you don't know what it is, and that you don't even know to ask questions about it, and then imply to my peers and implicate anything that has to do with me professionally on the grounds of safety is abysmal. And not only is that, that, only are you making your own community look bad. You're making your fire department look bad. You're making uh, me look bad, which is not a big deal. I got a fixed skin. I've been doing this for over thirty years in, in, in public arena. But you're making the cadets look bad, which I cannot forgive. So I'm just throwing that out there. Before you go, before you start in on your, on your journey to seek information, by God, do it. But know that you have resources that you currently own. And some of those resources are pretty darn good. I don't wanna tote, tote my boat too much, and I, and my colleagues would tell you that I know, don't normally do that. But when it comes to recruitment, retention, and cadet, and fire, and EMS, I am the expert in your community, and so is he. And most of them should be deferring you back to us because we're the ones that are consulting with their programs and building their programs with them, and we're happy to do it. It all starts here. You're the IGTIS. You're the focus. So please be proud of that fact and know that you have these things. Seek more information locally before you try to backstab it down the road. Unforgivable.
Fixing? Public comment?
I'm opposed to, um, dissolving the zoning ordinance. Um, I think that zoning is very important in Columbia Township. Um, it, it helps the residents have, um, safety in their properties. They, um, are in a relaxed environment. If that's where they choose to be, if we don't have zoning, we don't know what's gonna happen next to us. And, um, I think that we should continue our zoning.
Any other public comment? Uh, consent agenda checking register. Any discussion?
I have some, uh, questions. They were answered. Give you, uh. Yeah, not on the check, I'm, I'm sorry, I missed perfect. Not on the check register, it's on the payables. Those were answered. And, uh, bank accounts. I only had one question about, uh, trust and agency. That was answered as well for now, so I'm, I'm good with the consent agenda.
Here, use your microphone, Adam.
No, I definitely was reading. I'm beginning to come around. Sorry. Sorry about that. Thank you. So is that a motion to accept it?
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I would.
Does anyone have any comments on the kind of payables or on the, uh, balances that we're showing? Very good. Did I get a motion to, uh, approve the consent agenda as is?
So moved.
Gary made a motion. Do I get a second?
Second.
Very seconded. Some money thing, uh, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, you gotta check some of that. Roll call hole. Gary?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And yes, Carl?
Yeah.
Jason?
Yes.
All in favor? We're into reports. Uh, is there any question on the budget report that I provided? G one? JC?
Sure. Reports that you have in front of you should reflect year in. Uh, for the community, uh, last year, we responded to a hundred and thirty-two fire calls of various sorts. Seems like we were always going up, uh, to the township. Looks like we responded to Lee, uh, eighteen times last year. Um, so a hundred and thirty-two fire calls, two hundred and ninety-nine EMS calls, as for four hundred and thirty-one calls, uh, in my records, a, as opposed to three hundred and forty-four last year. So, uh, just as scosh, under a hundred more a year from last year to this. Um, and the rest of the reports are before you. I can answer any questions on those reports?
Any questions for this?
I do have a question about, um, did, did, was there a license? I didn't see it in the, the check register, uh, licensing renewal for radios. Did you see something up here for that?
What?
It's, it's from the, those are the things I promised you. Um.
I put that in your box. Joe took it back to you because I needed you to.
Right, but.
But I didn't get a bill. What was the?
Right, but someone paid it somehow because we're good till twenty thirty-four now, when we try to go fix it. It was already done fixed, and we're trying to figure it out now.
What's the company?
Huh?
What's like the?
They said maybe it would be a hundred bucks. It's, it's the FCC licensing for radios. And, and I, I was getting one a month, right?
Mm-hmm.
And our, our radio guy was supposed to take care of it. He said, when I went to go do it, it was done dead. So we're still trying to figure that out, uh, as far as the radio goes, but currently it looks like it's good till twenty thirty-four, um, as far as I know.
I thought you had to look at the channels or something. That's why I sent it to you, the, all the channels and.
Right, right, yeah. Yeah, no, all those channels are true and accurate. I ran it back because I don't know any of that stuff. That's the radio guy, but that's the only, uh, question I have. So if ever find anything out there for the FCC for a hundred bucks, I just was interested in how that happened because we don't even have the passwords to get in there and redo it. So somebody has it somehow to do it to, ha, ha, ha. That'd be nice to know. Currently, we're good for till thirty-four, so.
Chair, current?
Uh, I apologize for sending the report into you guys late. Um, I know you requested it last week, but, um, been a rather busy last few weeks, or the first few weeks in the year for us, and Sharon's office, especially today and yesterday. Totally calls for the last month, in Jersey, in Columbia Township of sixty-three. Um, due to weather, inclement weather, seeing a lot more obvious accidents, slide-offs, um, make sure we announce to our citizens, if you don't need to be out on the roads, don't go out on the roads. You don't, if you absolutely can make do without what you're trying to run to the store for, wait till the weather breaks. Uh, there's no sense in driving, um, roads like today. Um, we have been assisting the fire, uh, Columbia Fire, and first response with as many medicals as we can. Make it to, although I will apologize, I haven't made it to all of them. Um, I do try and make it when I'm here. So. If I'm not, yeah, yes, if I'm not already on another call. Um, but. Uh, if there's any questions regarding the sheriff's department report, uh, I can answer those for you.
Any questions for the sheriff? Uh, Life's Not Here, Senior Services is not here. County Commissioner?
Hi, uh, good evening. I handed out uh, uh, highlights for twenty twenty-four. There's one up here. You have it. Take a glance at that. At your leisure. Um, some good things that have happened. Um, I'm sure you probably all heard now that uh. Lieutenant Casey Davis is now the under sheriff. Um. We approved the contract for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five with the public vendor's office. Uh, approved the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund Project Agreement to accept the grant for kayak launches going on in Hartford. Um, approved painting of the rotunda in the courthouse that cost uh, thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Um, Dick Ockery was uh. Awarded with a proclamation. He stepped out. He's been a commissioner since twenty-ten. He was replaced by uh, Dave DeStefano. That'll be a. Good, uh, good addition to our commission. Um, we had our organizational meeting uh. Two weeks ago, Randy Pete was elected chair, Paul Sinterio vice chair again. And we, people always, I don't know, I love people. How much do you guys get paid? The last uh. January, we changed, actually have to do it a year in advance. And as of right now, we get paid twenty-one thousand dollars a year. Uh, before we got paid for DM, which was so much for every meeting, we went to and then mileage, we go along against either one of those. So. It's uh, we had to average out to twenty thousand and somebody said, what about mileage? So they added another. About, we get paid twenty thousand as a commissioner. Uh, working on a portion rep plan for the county. Um, trying to get that going, working with the um, southwestern Michigan Planning Commission. I know. Most of you probably know Julie Piyok or, you know, Ernber or whatever over here. She's actually retiring after thirty-one years from MSU Extension. And um. Then I also have, I'm gonna leave a couple cards back here. Somebody had contacted me interested in uh. Getting some business help and I talked to our uh, folks that, they kind of do some of the bigger planning. They come to find out that there actually is a uh, group in South Haven. Um, and I'll leave these back there. South Haven Business. Club and they help people with uh, starting business and growing your business. Um, I didn't know they existed, so I went to one. They had a, they called the pitch, which they had four different people there. Kind of like the thing on TV where people go in and, you know, give what they want to do and they're very uh, very good. So these businesses are up, had all started and. And uh, they, like I said, they gave their pitch, so I will leave these back there. If anybody wants to. Start up a business or has a business and needs some help, these are the people to see. So. All I have. Questions, comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, there's one here from the road commission. Uh, we did get revenue sharing. It's about sixty-five thousand. Uh, we do have the budget already fit together for next year and the list of the roads, so. Then uh, on last month's, I think, uh, board. Cessar's not here. Sony the administrator is not here. We got a report from Gary?
Reports in the uh, packet.
Jason, anything about your report?
Not at this time.
Mary?
Oh, I'm good.
Kara?
I'm good.
I'm good. I did add uh, FOIA requests. And I'll just describe what we got. Did we uh, get rid of that public comment right there?
Um.
Public comment on the agenda? H, that eliminated?
Yeah, since we already did.
We normally do public comment after reports. Where does he services? JC?
Well, I guess I jumped the gun on where the, put my period report. There you go. Um. We started an EMR class. I was running an EMR class or am running an EMR class, which is the Simult Responder. Uh, for our department for free. Um, the only thing that we paid for is books and online access to testing. Uh, we had ten start with our department for our department. And we took in three from Bangor and three from Lawrence. And they'll be remunerating us. Uh, uh, Bangor and Lawrence both will be sending us a check um. For three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifteen cents to cover those, those costs there. Uh, who was receiving that in? That'll go back into uh. The training budget. Uh. Currently, we are halfway through. Uh, we did have to cancel Monday, so we'll reschedule that date. I'm teaching that class under my credentials. Uh, I have a master's of arts in teaching. Uh, I have a bachelor's degree in public safety. Uh, and thousands of hours of, of training. I'm giving that to the, the people of township for free because we need to have coverage. That's what we need to do. So I'm not charging anything, anybody anything for this class. The uh, I would like the board to uh. Uh, just give me the check mark for Riley Kirchner, who is an emergency. Uh, he's an EMR currently. Uh, he is a firefighter, one and two. Um, I thought I had his packet with me. I will bring that to you, but he's one of Jeremy and my graduates. Much like most of the department is. Um. And so uh, I, I bring them to you uh, for uh, a yes, no. Uh, the septic system has been stalled by weather and uh, the repair person's family has been. Um, plagued with death, so they're going to be getting to it as soon as humanly possible. Uh, right now it is still sort of working, so we're just gonna uh. Hope for that. Uh. When the station two was originally built. It had two for, or three uh, heating sources, one out the bay, and there's actually two different lines in the bay. Uh, the two different furnaces out there, and then there is a radiant furnaces. And then there are forced air furnaces inside, one for the old, uh, what was the Coloma? Um, ambulance part of the uh, bay uh, or the uh, station and then one for the regular station. Um. Right now. We have our deputy that is in the old Coloma area. That furnace has in fact failed. There's no repair to it. Uh, and it is literally. Uh, falling apart. Literally you touch it, it literally puts apart pieces. So uh, they have shut that off, the, the. Furnace, the HVAC, they would shut that completely. They said the one that is running the station currently right now on the inside, it's going to be rushable if you get through the winter. But next year would be definitely not a good idea. Uh, the quote coming back to replace uh, both of those heat units with one big enough just to do the whole station. Six thousand, seven ninety-nine and two cents. Um, that will take care of. The two old furnaces going away, one new furnace going in, and they'll do all the tie-in of the ducts up top. So after I just spent sixteen thousand dollars in my own house, I think six or almost seven thousand for the rest of it is acceptable. The uh, I sent you guys a, a draft version of uh, an ordinance for cost recovery for emergency services. To address some of the issues that we talked about earlier in the budget meeting. Uh, this is an ordinance that I've found in Dave's stuff that it looks like he sent to you guys years ago. In an attempt to offset this. Or it was something that was talked about or something. I don't know. It was in Dave's stuff, so I, I'm just. Whatever it is, doesn't matter.
Well, it, it. Dave, Dave asked me to generate one and then he decided not to turn it in. That's what you got.
Okay, that, uh, my brother and I both looked it over and it is a, a good start. Um, and especially in light of. Uh, some of the funding issues that we're talking about. Um. Just so you know, for you guys up there at the board, you're all invited to dinner on January twenty-fifth at six PM. This is one of the opportunities my brother was talking about of. Showing up for our people, uh, to show that you guys actually care uh, about them. And, and I said that wrong. I said that wrong. I know you care. To show your support for them, they don't know you guys. They only know of you. They only know of you. Some of them might know you, but they only know of you. And so uh, we're, we're. Having a potluck. We're not, we're not doing any, anything fancy, so you're welcome to come out to that. Uh, we have trainings, the second and the fourth Tuesdays of the month, and we would love any and all people to come and visit with us. Uh, during that timeframe. We are working during that time, but you're welcome to join in. Um. Uh. Something that I thought about, if the board wants, I could put you on E-Dispatch, so you can hear when every single call goes out. It'll wake you up in the night on your phone and uh, let you know every time they go out, which leads me to my last statement. Uh, now here's a question. Do you want me to talk this statement here as the fire chief or later as the public? Nothing else, okay. Um.
One statement.
Well, and, and the reason I, the reason I say this is. I've lived in this area since two thousand and one. Moved here in the fall of two thousand and one. I've been in the fire department since the fall of two thousand. Over the years, there's been silence. Of trust and mistrust, and I'm not really sure why, other than people just don't trust people. My brother's not wrong in saying, i- if you want some questions answered, I will answer any question. But to go other places first without our knowledge is like. It's like taking a dump in my living room. And then walking through and smearing it around and walking through the, I know that's kind of crass, but I want you to know how terrible I feel. I feel so horrible right now. The, the amount of. Damage that has been done to me personally this week. Because. Of. The actions of, I don't know. When my brother told me about this and I confirmed it, my first inclination was to just chuck it in because clearly I'm not cared for. I'm not wanted. Regardless of the dollar sign, doesn't matter. The dollar doesn't matter, but the action spoke to such a disrespect. I cannot. Imagine that level of disrespect. And then wanting to then have a meeting to talk about it. It would be like looking directly to the face of a demon. And saying, you're my friend. I, I can't do that. I'm, I'm totally and utterly destroyed. I cannot believe. That this happened. And because of that, you've got to know. That. I am a very forgiving person by nature. I didn't used to be. But there is a limit to my compassion. There is a limit. And I'm at it right now. Thank you.
Well, I think we need a motion to hire Riley Kirchner. Can I get a motion for that?
It's Riley, isn't it?
Riley, R-I-L-E, Riley Kirchner.
And you say he's already a certified number two and an EMR as well?
Yep.
You guys probably.
Yep, we trained him. He doesn't know by now, he never knew.
Where does he live?
Manawhat.
Manawhat.
He come up and fill out. He comes up. They come up and they stay by the station for, I pray now, I've got two kids there now studying. Because they want to be there because of us, the culture that we create.
Is this? They don't respond from there.
They don't, nobody is to respond from outside.
They don't respond.
No one ever responds from there.
Look, when they're in Columbia Township, are they being paid on calls?
No, no, if there's a call, they get.
If they get a call, they.
Oh, that, that reminds me. Thank you for saying that. And any citizen that has any question about. Causing me to stand up. Any citizen that has a question about how a call goes down, that comes to me. It doesn't go to my people at all. We had a call the other day assisting somebody that had to get tased. My boy Joe was out there in the, uh, was out there in twenty-seven ten. Took care of the stuff, helped life get unloaded, helped law enforcement, the whole nine yards, but he would needed help. Riley came to back him up. From the station in his personal vehicle. Because he's not authorized yet to drive any of our vehicles.
So he doesn't have a day job?
He got. It doesn't matter. That's none of your concern, quite frankly. He showed up to help. He got stuck in the snow. Joe used tent to pull him out of the snow. Some citizen drove by. And started griping out Joe, how dare, isn't that township supervisor, isn't that township uh, property? Well, yes, it is. How dare you? How dare you was the words used. Hold this person up. Well, he's one of our people. That's how we dare. We take care of our own. So if anybody has a question. By all means. Write it in the notes, two, six, nine, eight, three, eight, three, five, zero, zero. It comes to this phone right here. And if I can't answer you, I'll get right back.
So what is the? It says here, township board, consider hiring Riley Kirchner. So he would be hired into the, your department? Is that what you're?
On my roster of individuals authorized and covered by our insurance to help us when he's there. Just like Jeremy, Joe, uh. Anyone that's on our list.
Like a paid-on call. That's like a classification.
He will only be paid. When he's on, when there's a call, go out.
And, and what, I, I, I guess my only concern is here, and it's because of what is in your SOG, and what is the five mile limit?
Not my SOG. That is not my SOG. And SOGs are Guido. Those are not binding rules by any.
Plus, he's not responding for.
He's not, he's staying at the station when he's on.
Yeah.
So there's no, there is no disrespect.
That in the past.
I, I know, I know.
Okay, okay.
I know. I know it was the best.
It's the only reason.
That's in the past.
Okay.
If we're going to be asked to take care of this with nothing, I've got to be able to do it with nothing.
Anybody else on the board have any comments or anything on it?
No, Gary's got a motion. You got something, Mary?
Yes, I was just going to ask with this new um. Law thing that we have to do, we're going to have to figure all that out in the.
That's, I mean, that's, that's a separate issue. That's just a humdinger that you actually let me know whenever we talk.
Couple days ago, yeah.
Cause that will definitely.
Earn time up. We're gonna have to.
It will definitely affect them.
We also are going to need, like Joe, he pays a lot of time. She, we need to know who, who goes to which fire on which day. We have to put, well, Jen has to put that all in, so.
If that, yeah, right, for the, are you sure about the earn time?
Yeah, so we're just need to.
If this comes down the way that is, we're going to totally revamp the entire thing, absolutely.
Okay.
But for right now. To my knowledge, we're still doing it the same way until so directive.
Yeah.
So because of that, I'm working in the now, not to tomorrow.
Just be ready to know we're gonna have.
Oh, absolutely.
When it comes.
I absolutely, I absolutely agree, because tomorrow's actually going to be faster than we all might think. I do apologize, citizens, for my angst. But you can only eat so much crap before you finally snap. And it doesn't matter who you are. You can be the Pope before you snap. And for those that don't know, because I'm sure that there's some condemnation going out there, I'm a pastor, quarter-time pastor. But pastor does not mean pushover by any means. There you go.
I got a motion by Gary. Can I get a second?
All second.
It's a little money thing. Gary?
Yeah.
Mary?
Yes.
Kenzie, yes. Kara?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes. I would like to say something before we move on to the next item. I was going to reserve this for the end of the meeting. Um, trustee comments, but. Since there was some pretty. Since there was some pretty fiery things said and quite frankly accusations made, um I do want to address those. For the benefit of everyone else sitting here that might not know all the things that are going into that emotion. First of all. I'm sorry that you guys feel backstabbed and and under supported. I think I would speak for everybody up here to say that we. Uh understand and value what you do. Um, the issue at hand, uh if you don't know this yet, is that we are facing a very severe budget challenge with our emergency services department. In a year or less, we will be in the deficit and three years out will be. Projected seven hundred thousand dollars in the hole because of equipment needed and all kinds of things. So we have a gigantic rat's nest to figure out. And I just want to say on behalf of our board, I was not at that conversation. I don't know what questions were asked. Uh, I'm sorry that you felt like people went around your back. I don't even know who it was, but I will say this. I just want to represent this side of the story in saying that because of the the huge challenge that we're up against in trying to figure out. Budgetary um equipping for your services or figuring out if our township even wants to support that through increased taxes. That's a huge deal that everyone takes here very seriously. And any. Research that was done was simply to try to see what other alternatives were, other ideas, how other townships are handling fire services. And quite frankly, I don't, I'm not gonna get into this. I I'm just gonna say this, but there was, there was rumor. Of somebody who was underage going on a fire call, a sixteen year old, which is a huge concern, obviously for our insurance purposes. So. I just don't like the inference that there was intentional backstabbing because we have tried to have a lot of conversations with you and we have a lot more conversations to have. But um I apologize on behalf of the board for whoever whoever it was or whatever happened.
No, he, there's your sixteen year old right there. He's part of your cadet program that you approved. That's what I'm telling.
Okay, I didn't approve anything, cause this was before my time.
But you're bored.
Listen.
You have the paperwork.
Okay.
It was not a danger and to even infer it without talking to me, you gotta see that. That's not. You were saying it was a rumor though.
Things happen in real time and we are simply trying to do what we, I mean, we are elected officials. Yes, we lead the township, but actually the residents lead us because we are elected officials. So. We have to do extr- an extreme amount of due diligence to figure out how do we even vote on an issue every single time it comes up on the agenda. So I'm not, I'm not arguing about how you feel. I'm sorry that you feel that way, but I just want everybody to know because. That in and of itself, isolated, sounds like we are against you and we are going around your back intentionally and not talking to you, and that's not the case. So that's all I want to say.
I don't think that's all of you. You would have talked to me if if it were the case, cause I I run the cadet program. So you would have talked to me. So that is the case.
And we we will talk about this because this insurance right here.
Sure.
Is what we need to talk about.
Absolutely.
With the cadet program.
What do you need for the furnace in the station too?
Six thousand, seven hundred and ninety nine dollars and two cents.
Six thousand and what?
Six thousand, seven hundred and ninety nine dollars and two cents. Is to remove and dispose of two dead furnaces.
So currently, do you have money in the budget for that or not?
I can find it. I'm I'm way under budget on a lot of things right now.
I can tell you.
It's gonna mean that we're gonna give up on something else.
I can tell you one thing. I looked at J C's budget and that guy's on the money. He's doing a good job.
I told you that I do.
I I no doubt about it.
I'm not lying to you.
That, and that's not the issue.
Do you, do you, do you have more than one bid?
I do not, because getting people to come out is tantamount to asking them out to move towards me. This one here is because both of the people, the owner and the the lead tag are both my own students, so I have. Hands to get them moving. I can get, I can get more. It will not take anything. I've got, I I we can talk to.
That has the township board approved?
No one's, this is the first you've heard of this. This is the first you've heard of this, other than I said that there's a problem. There's been some repair bills to keep it going that that Cara's paid. But that's, I mean, that's to to keep the one running. So I'm just telling you, this, this is an information. This will get started. This was a first pass. I'm just letting you know this is on the docket for we need to fix it.
Well, you need heat, so I, if.
He's the one.
Okay.
I have to have heat in my office.
The, this should not, we should not delay on this. I- in my opinion, we should not delay on this.
The efficiency is of the furnace. They have someone coming and looking.
Uh, I agree with.
I know.
Ed Fields Heating and Plumbing, come and take a look at it. That is who is the expert. What other expert would you like? I know, I'm sorry. I didn't answer that question.
No, I tried getting estimates for our.
Your light.
Lights outside and I sent out, I called four different people and nobody wanted to make any money, I guess.
Meat in South Haven will come out and so will Fleetwood's. So then you.
Secretly, when I was training, well, I gotta.
They don't have three.
Well, make the, I'll I'll call me tomorrow and 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 fit with tomorrow.
But how do we, how do we do this so we don't have to wait till next month to?
Well, no, what we can do is make a motion not to exceed sixty eight hundred dollars. And then he can get another bid, have two bids.
Yeah, you can't mess around with this kind of weather with that.
No, it's ridiculous.
Is that, is that your motion, Jason?
Uh, yeah, let's work that through. Uh, make a motion that we approve an expenditure up to sixty eight hundred dollars. Uh, if we get two other bids. And that he can move forward on getting heat in the fire station.
You second?
Second.
Roll call vote, uh Jason?
Yes.
Kara?
Yeah.
Kenzie, yes. Mary?
Yes.
Gary, yes.
Don't go and service these every year like you got, or did they tell you last year like you're on your list? Are they pretty good at telling you you're, it's falling apart here?
I think that's the problem. I've never been serviced.
Well, they've been serviced, but your previous chief was an H VAC guy. So he took care of that stuff. I am not that.
Okay, let's move on.
J C, could you let us know what in your budget will have to be compromised for that expenditure to take place, please? Thank you.
You had something in here, cost recovery ordinance. Are you, are you asking the township board to take a look at that?
Yes, I am.
So I'll put it on the next month's agenda?
Yeah, I said, I sent it to you all. I should have, you should have already had it, but yes, please.
I I'm glad this is, this is a. Relating real quickly just for charging for.
If not, I'll give it to you.
And out of the twenty eight responses in December. Six of them were at the same minute.
She's good. Don't worry about that.
Twenty third, twenty fourth and twenty fifth, right? Another five were at other addresses, addresses.
Yeah.
And I think that something needs, needs to be done. For cost recovery.
Jason, can I, I just need to address you real quick because I agree with you a hundred percent. The reason I get so anxious and maybe this is something that a lot of people don't understand. We carry with us every single call around and if they just. Beats you. And when you have teammates.
Okay, we're gonna move on.
It's hard to, it's hard to take. And then to be reduced, remember, and I know that's not your intention. It's reduced to a number. It destroys, it destroys your very soul. So I I get what you gotta do. But she also, we also have to be thinking about the human part. So, thank you for this.
Okay, we're gonna enter to a hearing on a tax amendment. Mary Flumane requested a public hearing on a tax amendment change to allow building on vacant lots. Foundation and removal one hundred and fifty what square foot of additional bedroom. Probably have to generate a list of concerns that. That we need to address.
That looks like the blade that we're not taking care of.
What?
Those pictures.
Wouldn't the, wouldn't the proper procedure here since uh this resident requested a hearing and is not able to attend, but send a letter in the place, read the letter?
You have a letter here, President.
That's the point, so that person could be heard, I guess.
Tell me to read it.
Yeah, there, from the actual letter, that's the sending it in. You wanna go to the next one? Says property owners and got the pictures. Yeah.
Do I need my microphone?
Yeah, I wanna hear.
I have such a soft little voice.
Columbia Township property owners, your residential property values are in jeopardy. Residential property owners of Columbia Township, do you want an unsightly or otherwise non-dwelling building? E G shed, full barn, storage structure or other building for uses other than a dwelling? As those depicted below allowed on a vacant residential property, i.e. undeveloped property having no dwelling. Next to or in the vicinity of your residence. If not, be aware the Columbia Township Board of Trustees may soon approve such non-dwelling buildings. On vacant properties in residential zones of the township. The long established Columbia Township Master Plan and the Columbia Township Zoning Ordinance. Have evolved over many years of planning efforts by the Columbia Township Planning Commission. Jointly with and approved by citizens and property owners of the township. The master plan sets forth an organized framework for growth of the township while the zoning ordinance sets forth. The regulations of land usage, e.g. allowable structure type, size limits, property line set packs, etc. Within the residential zones of the township. I just messed up a little bit. An underlying, underlying goal of both the matchup plan and the zoning ordinance has been to improve and maintain the quality of life. Of township citizens and property owners, promote goodwill among neighbors. Preserve the unique character of residential zones of the township and preservation of residential property values. Currently, the township zoning ordinance allows only an accessory structure, i.e. a structure such as a garage. Incidental to a dwelling use located on an adjacent or nearby property in common ownership. To be erected on a vacant property, but only by a special use permit. The special use permit process involves Township Planning Commission notification of neighboring property owners. Within three hundred feet of the vacant property of any. Vacant property owner request to erect an accessory structure on a vacant property. This special use permit process affords neighboring property owners the opportunity to object to such intended land use. During a Township Planning Commission public hearing prior to a decision granting a special use permit by the Township. Planning Commission. Because of this longstanding special use permit process, the unique character of residential zones have. Has been preserved over the years. On July tenth, twenty twenty four, the Columbia Township Planning Commission proposed revisions to the Columbia Township Zoning Ordinance. That will repeal the current special use permit requirement for accessory structures on a vacant property. As well as now allow the erection of a non-dwelling building on any vacant property in residential zones. Of the township exclusive, inclusive of a special use permit. As consequence of these Township Planning Commission proposed Township Zoning Ordinance revisions. You will no longer be notified of any special use permit request for the erection of a non-dwelling building on a vacant property within thirty. Three hundred feet of your residential property, nor will you be afforded the opportunity to oppose the granting of a special use permit. Before the Township Planning Commission during a public hearing. Your current right to be notified and to oppose such non-dwelling construction on vacant residential properties will be repealed. By these proposed Township Zoning Ordinance revisions. Presumably, the Township Planning Commission justification for proposing these Township Ordinance. Revisions is to reduce the supposed lengthy special use permit process required of a property owner. Wanting to erect a non-dwelling building on vacant property. The Township Planning Commission is willing to compromise your right of being notified and the opportunity to voice an objection. In a public hearing for the sake of reducing the time and effort of a property owner seeking a special use permit. How abusive of your rights as a property owner. As is customary, Township Planning Commission proposed revisions to the Township Zoning Ordinance. Must be presented to the Van Buren County Planning Commission for opinion. As to whether such revisions are compliant with the Van Buren County Master Plan. On October ninth, twenty twenty four, the Van Buren County Planning Commission expressed an opinion. Or the proposed revisions that included the following excerpts. The existing special use permit process ensures transparency by notifying neighboring property owners. And allowing for community feedback. Removing this step could lead to a lack of community engagement and potential disputes over new developments. There is also concern that allowing accessory buildings without a special use permit. Risks disrupting the character of residential and agricultural zones. Potentially leading to a decline in the unique qualities of certain areas, particularly near sensitive locations like lakefronts. There remains significant concern about implications for community character transparency. And alignment with long term planning goals, signed the Van Buren County Planning Commission. Final approval of proposed Township Zoning Ordinance revisions is the responsibility of the Columbia Township Board of Trustees. Supervisor Ken Spicer, Kara, Clerk Kara Hartman Laraway, Treasurer Mary Phelps, Trustee Jason Bull, Trustee Jerry Gruss. On Tuesday, January twenty first, twenty twenty five, the Columbia Township Board of Trustees will hold a public hearing on the proposed revision. The public hearing will be held during the regular monthly board meeting beginning at seven P M. in the Columbia Township Hall. You are opposed to the board approving the revisions, you can attend this public hearing to express your objections to these revisions. B, send a letter of opposition to the Board of Trustees at P O Box three two three, Grand Junction, Michigan, four nine zero five six. C, send an email to the Board of Trustees to clerk@columbia twp dot com. D, call Township Supervisor Ken Spicer at six one six two one eight three seven six one. Or D, email Supervisor Ken Spicer at supervisor@columbia twp dot com. The zoning ordinance revisions are a complete affront to the long established Columbia Township Master Plan. Developed by the Township Planning Commission jointly with property owners of the township. These Township Zoning Ordinance revisions will do nothing but diminish the goodwill among neighbors. Promote the proliferation of vacant property uses inconsistent with residential properties. Diminish the unique character of residential zones of the township and surely lower the value of your residential property. We can only wonder why members of the Columbia Township Planning Commission would disregard the longstanding will. Of the Columbia Township citizens and property owners as expressed in the Columbia Township Master Plan. Signed, Mary and Roger Flumang, Grand Junction Property Owners.
Oh, thank.
It's water.
Well, that was the three minutes.
That is the what?
Three minutes. One letter.
See.
You should generate a list of concerns and then address them.
Well, when I was reading through this, I picked out five. And uh. The ones I picked out, maybe I missed some, and you can correct it. It was a personal property. the ones I picked out, maybe I missed some, and you can correct it. It was personal property, character and values, structures on vacant property adjacent, or the use of, or by, by special use permit. Three is the same thing, it's covered, special use permit on vacant properties. Notification to residents to either approve or object, and last was lower property values. So I don't know if I missed any.
I had not supported by the Master Plan, and there's only ordinance preference to the residential districts don't support supported in the wording in the beginning. The intent. I had unique characteristics, property values, special use permit, that it needs to maintain a special use permit if you're going to do it. I got transparency out of that and and then vacant, vacant lots are inconsistent with their residential districts. Anyone else have comments that they wrote down?
Wasn't the amendment for vacant lots in A? No, I had all the, I had all, our one, our two, our O. Again.
So is the procedure for this is put this together and send it back to the planning commission for review and discussion?
Well, he has a concern with the Master Plan and we can, we can say, I guess we really don't know, we didn't have, I guess, pull up the text amendment. I guess, why don't we look at the text amendment and see if there's anything that we got from the county or from from Tasha that gave the reason that they looked at the Master Plan, the zoning ordinance. They discussed the character, unique character of the district and how they justified it when they approved it.
That was the only one that was sent back from the county, wasn't it? The other two were.
Yep.
Wasn't that the only one sent back?
Yep.
They, they approved the others.
Is that the one? I don't think that's the one from the county.
Well, for time constraints, actually, all we need to do is do this list and stuff and then, and then maybe this can be put on, since we've addressed the concern of the of residents who requested it. Put this list together and look at the county's reply. And then maybe move on this for next meetings. I don't, I don't know, that's just my thought. Any other thoughts?
You're making a motion that we return this to the
I'm not making a motion.
Okay.
I'm making a discussion.
Okay. I, I don't see any problem sending this back to the county to have them address each one of the items listed in the letter.
Would it be the county or the planning commission?
The county does need to. County's already made their, be the planning commission based on what the county's notification was. That's what it would be. County's already made their their decision. County commissioners have already done it.
Well, county commission sends their comments back.
That's exactly what they did.
What they did, and the planning commission, from what I understood, was going to take a look at those and adjust those or correct those, right? Or send it to the township board. Right?
It's been sent to the township board.
So you, there are no corrections to the county. You want us to prove it with the county comments, right? Or you want the township board to do something about the county comments?
Well, I think it bears repeating again that while it's part of the process that it does go to the county planning commission, our township is not required to have the same opinion as the county. That's a procedural step. It is not a legislative binding step at all, and Kurt, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Okay. So in any text amendment that goes to the county for their review, they, they return a finding, and we can either agree with that finding or we can disagree with that finding. We're not required to side with that. Right?
Okay, well, I got a lot of problems, you know that. One of them says initiation of amendment. It says amendments of this ordinance may be originated with the Township Planning Commission by a vote of the majority of the representative memberships. I could not find where the initiation of that document was made in accordance with 801.
It doesn't say shall, it says may.
Pardon?
It doesn't say shall, it says may.
May originate with either the township board or the planning commission by a vote. So if you initiate it, you got the vote. I, I went and looked at the June 12th meeting and it was recommended that Tasha bring you something for the July 10th. And somewhere between that, there was no vote. But in the middle of June, something, a notice went into the paper for a public hearing, and then the public hearing was held. And then after the public hearing, it was approved without any evaluation of the comments generated that day by the, by the notes. So the question is that procedure says you're going to planning commission generates the ordinance, or the amendment to the ordinance, and then had to have a vote of the majority. And then, at that point, it says you're going to have a public hearing, but you didn't vote on it. You just went right to a public hearing.
We voted on everything. I don't, I guess, I don't know what you're referring to. I, how about, how about we do this? This, this has been dragging on and kicked down the road and I, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a few comments, and I, I feel like the board needs to give some firm direction on what we want to do with this at this point, because this is, this is borderline ridiculous at this point. My opinion is that the planning commission followed the steps that we were, we were required to follow. This has been, this has been asked of our zoning administrator who has 25 years of experience. It's been asked by our, to our attorneys. And, and we have not received any sort of word that we violated any legal procedural step. What I think is happening is that candidly, you don't like the text amendments, Ken. And so now you are coming up with every little possible procedural nitpicky thing to try to delay and delay and delay and delay this. And I will just say, let's boil this down to the simplest form. The planning commission is commissioned to do what they thinks in the best interest of our citizens, correct? So as we are going through the ordinances to evaluate different parts of the ordinances that needed to be updated or, or in better format or conformed or consistent, because we had a lot of inconsistencies in our ordinances, we came across these three issues. These three issues are issues that are real to our citizens, because we have 17 different cases where people have requested either to build an accessory building on a piece of vacant property, or to build a house with a smaller square footage footprint than what is currently allowed, or to build a, a dwelling that does not require a perimeter foundation. Those are the three issues that we got requests from our citizens from. And I believe, I can't speak for the, the legality of this, this information, but I believe Mary did a survey of our residents who basically said, we would like to build what we can, what we want to build on our own property, i.e. our ordinances are too restrictive. So the planning commission took up this matter and said, these three issues, I, I want to correct one thing that was in that letter that's not correct. Our current ordinances don't specify that an accessory building must be built on an adjacent or nearby parcel. There is no distance specified in our current ordinances. And there was one person on the planning commission that wanted us to adopt that you could only build an accessory building on an adjacent parcel, which seemed both ridiculous and very restrictive to the rest of the planning commission. So we rejected that notion and decided to evaluate what is our current ordinance on accessory buildings. And I will say that in all three of these cases, we can, we can look at them one at a time, but in all three of these cases, we were siding with the notion that we should, our residents should be, our ordinances should be less restrictive and more permissive to building than they are, and that's what we believe our residents want. So in the matter of the accessory building, which seems to be the focus of this letter, I'll leave the other two aside for now. The only requirement is that the builder owns another piece of property in the township. It doesn't say anything about distance to that property. It doesn't say anything about even what kind of structure you can build the accessory building, in the accessory building. So we went to the measure of adding things like it can't have a bathroom in it. It has to, it has to comply with the minimum square footage of, of that zone. It has, it has to have a maximum height. We actually added enhancements to the ordinance, but the one thing that we agreed on in a four to one vote on the planning commission was that why should someone who's going to build a barn have to go through a special use permit process and pay $750 to do that when someone who builds a house does not have to do that? So we thought it was in the best interest of our residents to remove the special use requirement, because a neighbor doesn't get notified if somebody decides to build a house next to him. And we also made it with the assumption that most of the time, perhaps not all the time, but we can get hypotheticalized if we, if we look at all the possibilities of this, but most of the time we're talking about an agricultural piece of property. Those are the requests we get. Hey, I'd like to build a barn out here, out there so I can store my boat or my car or my camper or whatever. And so that is the nature of what we are trying to accomplish. Now, I'm just saying this to the board. You guys have been around. You've, you've known the process. And we've gone back and forth with the attorneys, we've gone back and forth with Supervisor Spicer, and I don't think it's an unfair statement to say you have blocked this for six months, Ken, because you don't like it. So I'm candidly over that. Let's, as a board, decide. Do you, do you want to throw this away and just say nope, that we're done with this? Or do you want to, do you want to take the recommendations of your planning commission that feel like this is a good idea and actually have a robust debate about this issue, rather than all the procedural mumbo jumbo that Ken's trying to throw in here and obfuscate the issue?
There's one thing that I think that my personal opinion is that if you have, and I don't care where the property is, if you build a structure on that, it's going to increase the value of the property.
Well, there's that too.
And you're going to have a, a larger tax base coming in. And I don't know anybody that's especially, and I've heard it said, and I don't remember who, that the people on the lakes don't have property enough because they're, it's congested, and you only have so much property, so they buy another piece of property and put up a, a storage building for their toys, for their boats, for their RVs, for their special, their, their their water crafts and that kind of thing to get them off of the property so they're not an eyesore and the neighbors don't complain about all their stuff hanging around outside.
Right now, they can build in the ag district. You're adding all the residential district, residential, single-family dwellings. And then you're adding to the single-family dwellings buildings. I don't see why, number one, most of our R1, R2, R0 already are congested with already regular single-family homes. There's probably a limited number of lots that you can buy in there that are vacant now, especially around the lakes. They should be satisfied with the ag district. You already allow them to do it in the ag district. Why are you adding residential? Especially when our master plan says we don't want that. The, the intent of each one of the the zoning districts, right in the beginning, so the single-family homes, common character, trying to protect property values. Why does our zoning ordinance and its preference do it? We're trying to protect the character of each district, and we're trying to protect the, the property values. And the, the second thing is, is that when you go to vote for something like this, your bylaws in section 5.4 states that you have to do finding the facts for all actions taken in administrative capacity, including but not limited to zoning. And that shall include each of the following parts. A fact findings listing the commissions determined to be relevant facts in the case in order to eliminate misleading statements, hearsay, irrelevant and untrue statements. And then from that list, you get to conclusions to list reasons to base the facts on the commission's action, often directly related or not related to finding the compliance or non-compliance to standard. At that point, then you're ready to remake, make a recommendation to us. And if you look at the statute, it says, if you look at section 803 of the zoning ordinance, it says you're going to give us your recommendations based on the motion.
I would think that from what you just read there, the fact finding was done because they contacted the, the attorneys and they contacted the, the county, the county, the county commissioners. And there was, there were comments made back and forth and, and even from the zoning administrator. So I, I would say that is your fact finding. And that was addressed.
Well, I, I'd like to know, I think it's important, Ken, what, what bylaws are you referencing? Because the bylaws that our zoning administrator sent me and the only ones that she could find don't have that in there.
2018.
I have 2018 as well. But I don't have that.
5.4.
But here, this is my point, like
Do you have it or don't you?
I, I don't want to get into, I don't want to read bylaw.
I don't want to get into.
Okay. If, so are you saying, Ken, let me just ask you a direct question. Are you saying that if we removed the residential portion of this, which is, it's kind of ironic that you want to focus on that because you just said that we have very limited residential properties where you could actually even do this. So I don't know why that's a sticking point, but if, let's just say that it is. If that was removed, would you be in favor of this, of this amendment?
It's already in the ordinance that way. I can't be, I don't have a subject to it. It's already in the ordinance that way. We had a guy from next to you, what went on 8th Avenue.
No, it's not. It's not in the ordinance that way.
In a vacant lot.
Okay.
But they did it? They can do it now?
But he had to get a special use, didn't he? Didn't your neighbor have to get a special use, pay the 750?
Yeah. He went through everything.
He did that with a special use.
I just, this is just
It just seems like if, if, if it got a bunch of people, and I guess a survey that was sent out by Mary that I, can you maybe explain that a little more?
Yes, I can. So I feel like I represent the public. I don't have any dog in this fight. I have, I'm on ag, got all my pool barns and everything. But I asked, what would you do? And I asked each of these three things separately. There were a couple of people that did have objections, but I would say 90% of the people, and you guys can all look at it, it's on Grand Junction now, had no problem. And it's like, if we're not hurting anybody, and some guy sent me a quote today and he said, people should be free to act however they wish unless their actions cause harm to somebody else. The other thing was, most of our citizens didn't even know we had all these restrictions. So that's why I said I want to bring up no zoning. Like, let's start over with a very simple zoning, because we can't even get along and argue about, I mean, this has just been going on for months. We're having meetings with the planning commission. It's, it's, we're taking stuff there.
How many responses did you?
Today I had 50. I had over 100 on the barn dominium. No one had a problem with the barn dominium, and everybody loved the small houses. And I think part of it is, when I look at a small house, I'm thinking a small, cute little granny pod, a small house. And I think other people are thinking they're going to buy a $5,000 shed and someone's going to start living in it. You know, I think that we have to go toward the 90% of the people that are going to do things right. And someone's going to start living in it. You know, I think that we have to go toward the ninety percent of the people that are going to do things right.
Well, you can't, you can't.
And, and take care of, uh, the people that aren't going to do it right.
There, there are special limits and restrictions for house.
I really, and I understand it, and I understand that zoning is good in its place, but I'm saying, we obviously in this township have too much. Where people don't even, can't even tell what it is.
We can't enforce it either.
And we don't enforce anything unless it's a neighbor calling out on a neighbor, you know?
You can't take it away from us. You can't take away from notifying your neighbor. You get a partner next to you. And then it's a business before you know it and you can't enforce, oh, it's a business. Oh, that's okay. You can't enforce.
No, and you can't.
So we just tell everybody no.
Well, you can't have a, and I know what you mean, and that's why it's, it's.
So my point is, I did the, the. The sir, I just asked people what they wanted. I get a hundred citizens that ask, and they actually said they were grateful that I asked their opinion. So I think we need to do more of that as a group. And we'll do it with the, the emergency services stuff. People need to know what's going on. And I feel like we're making decisions in a bubble. And even if we disagree with it, we have to do what our citizens want us to do. I, and I do believe in some zoning. I think we're overzoned. I mean, I think we're just. And I've been listening to this from all of you guys. I'm as confused as, I don't know how you would expect an average citizen to figure this out. This is hard. And there's got to be a way that we can make this simple. And I don't know. You know, I know, Ken, that you're very into procedure and I appreciate that. But it, it's time for the kiss policy here. I mean, we have to keep this simple because. We are not serving our, this is not serving our citizens.
Well, if we, if we adopted this. There's nothing to say you can't be amended later.
Well, the other thing is, if, if, if we're not going to really enforce anything, why are we doing anything?
That's right.
Why are we doing anything? All of them, that I see that it's been doing is gets one neighbor something to go after the other neighbor.
Well, the other thing is, is that you've got a lot of areas where there are hardly any neighbors. Or it's a long time of year when people start things and, and the neighbors aren't here, they're someplace else and they come back.
I mean, let's be honest, you, there's three of you that live on a lake and a house got three quarters of the way built before we didn't, we figured out they didn't have zoning. So then we obviously don't have the procedures in place. So if we're gonna, I'm just saying, let's tear it apart and start fresh, but.
Well, I, I think the only one that can determine what's going to happen in the future with these lands. Is our assessor. And our assessor should have provided a report to the planning commission. Her opinion about putting something on a vacant lot in a residential district and how that would affect. The other property values.
You know what I tell people that want to buy property? And do that? I said, you can't put a barn up in Columbia Township, but you go get two of those portable. Semi truck trailers and park them right there. I would rather have a nice full barn than I would. Two semi truck trailers that are temporary.
Last sixty years, people have wanted these ordinances and have approved these ordinances. So. Now you want to change them, then how's that going to affect the people that have complied all these years? And have, living in the, next to another person and another person, another person that has the same type. They got a, a garage up next to them.
They are so self-serving to certain people that probably have been on this board for years and done things the way they wanted. Instead of what exactly, how do we satisfy twenty-five hundred people? And cover them and protect them, but make it so complicated.
I'm going to call the root issue out right here and I'm going to make a motion because. The, the, it's clear to me the root issue is. Our board has not. Adopted. A consistent. Procedural. Process to follow. In this regard, because Ken, you just said something about the assessor should have looked at this. That's the first time I've heard that one. And it's like. How many more things are you, are going to be thrown in as roadblocks if we actually follow whatever steps and procedures? When somebody doesn't like the text amendment on a personal level. So I think. I, I think that's on the agenda at some point down there, isn't it? The board, the board will recommend planning commission priorities. Nope, that's not it. It's, it's kind of like the rules change so often, the planning commission is never going to be able to get anything done. So. The, it's, it's a waste of time.
We've also made it so complicated. Nobody wants to be on the plan.
Absolutely.
And I've heard that from two citizens.
The other thing is, is there's such a turnover on the people on the planning commission that that's why you can't get anything done. New people come on and they have their own idea. We just want to do that. That's, that's ridiculous.
Then you wonder why I can't get anybody in the fire department.
Since this has been. The procedural steps have been done. And. Our zoning administrator has voiced in. Our attorney has voiced in. The planning commission has done what they're supposed to do. And the county. Commissioners have done what they're supposed to do.
In fairness to Ken, because I've heard him on the phone with the attorneys, they say one thing and then they say something else. So everything is so subjective for interpretation and I don't really appreciate that.
But in this case, there's been some, some definite, uh, input. Uh, and some people agree with it and some people don't. But that's their opinion. So.
Well, I, I'm ready to make a motion to send at least the accessory building text amendment back to the planning commission. For. Further work, I guess, but. I'm saying that the planning commission will not be able to do anything with it until this board gives very clear direction. These are the five things that are needed on a text amendment, because the things that have been advanced are not legally binding. They are, they are opinions. They are recommendations. They are whatever. They're not, so the planning commission did not do anything wrong. But now that it's gotten to this point, it's like. I don't think you did this. You didn't do this. You didn't do this. Until we sort out what the planning commission needs, what process they need to follow. The planning commission is. Neutered. That, there's.
Well, and the other thing that I think that, uh. We need to consider is that. The attorney. Made their opinion of.
Yeah.
And if you don't like it.
Well, and, and this is the frustrating part about it is like. We say the master plan, master plan. Well, the master plan wants people to build in our, in our township. And we have lots of people saying, I'd like to build a barn dominium. I'd like to build a seven hundred and twenty square foot house. Because if you make me add a hundred and fifty square foot bedroom on it, like your ordinance say, at three hundred dollars a square foot, that's an extra forty-five thousand dollars in construction costs. And we have poor people that can't afford that. So. All the planning commission is trying to do is encourage building and give people more options and bring more tax base to the township. So. If, if we did something wrong there, guilty, but. We can't just sit here and turn things over and over and over and over. And, and get held up by one letter, which. Candidly, I'm not even sure. Well, I won't say that.
So your motions to send accessory buildings text amendment back to the planning commission with specific direction from township board.
Well, I don't. I don't know if we can put that together. I, I mean, I guess maybe we can. But I'm just saying that we can't keep throwing new things out of like, well, you didn't do this and you didn't do that and you didn't do this.
What if we subcontract out planning commission and so on, you know? Is that an option?
That could be another discussion, but we need to take care of what's on the table.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make sure.
Other foundations, I think who's ever reading that is reading it wrong and you can have. Barn dominions throughout the township. It's a single family dwelling.
I, I, I don't, I don't think that's right, Ken, because our zoning administrator said. Per our ordinances, you cannot build a dwelling that does not have a forty-two inch. Deep perimeter foundation around it. And a barn dominium doesn't have that. So, so you can't build a barn dominium because they don't.
Paragraph that talks about dwellings outside a mobile home park. The dwelling it's talking about there is a dwelling that is a mobile home outside the park. And back in the old days, it was called, you put a foundation around the skirt.
I just heard that completely different. I heard a dwelling outside of a mobile home park. I didn't see, I didn't hear you say a trailer outside of a mobile home park. Did I hear that wrong?
It's a dwelling outside a mobile home park.
See, that, that's even inconsistent with, with what a person would think it says.
You can't, and then it talks about a fourteen foot minimum width of your dwelling. Now, again, they're talking about a mobile home because we didn't want less than fourteen feet.
Right. This has nothing to do with mobile homes.
With your foundation and why it's written the way it's written.
Okay. I think we're going down the rabbit hole here.
Of all other dwellings are done in accordance with state law.
Yeah, and there's building codes for that. So that takes care of that.
Building code needs to reference appendix, uh, E because the. Appendix E says if you don't have this reference into the Michigan building and. Building that code of two thousand fifteen. You don't have it in your ordinance.
Excuse me, Ken, but you, they would follow the building codes. Whatever's in that code, they would follow it.
All I can tell you is Michigan building code allows for barn dominiums. Several townships around us allow barn dominiums. We're the only one that does.
You right now. Besides someone reading.
That's not, that is not what our zoning administrator is saying, Ken. That's what you're saying. That's not what our zoning administrator is saying.
Make the change I offered to you.
Can I make a thing? Shouldn't we just clear up the language? This is what the planning commission is trying to do. Shouldn't we just clear up the language so you don't waste? Taxpayer money and taxpayer time arguing about this? Shouldn't we just go ahead and make it clear and say, hey, you can build a barn dominium? Just change like we put in the tax so that we don't have to have all these, can we, can't we? And all this discussions. It's ridiculous.
Okay, uh, Jason, you said you were going to make a motion or, 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 you said there was already a motion on the table?
Started, but I don't know if he wants to change it. We're talking about the, uh, the vacant lot. This is what we're talking about. Accessory building on a vacant lot.
And Ken, you are the one who has expressed issue with this from the jump. What do you think we should do?
Personally, I don't think we should have vacant, uh, lots in our residential area. No, no buildings on vacant lots in our residential area. That's, that's. Really, I think our zoning ordinance, the master plan is leading me to that belief. And that's why I'm saying it. And the mono surveys that we had and the studies we had. Back in the time when they developed it is telling us that, and I don't see anything that tells me otherwise coming from the planning commission. That according to the survey, according to the technical. Support people that you have developing your planning is telling us something different today that we can now go do that.
So you're saying you want to keep the way it is in residential? But you'd be.
I want to keep it where you can go into the ag district. And build a. Building on a vacant lot.
With or without a special use? Cause they're without.
If you're an egg, do you have to even have that?
You have to have a special use.
Yeah, you had, right now you have to have a special.
Yeah, right now you do.
So they're trying.
I don't know. I could, I could, I, I could see the reason why your neighbors might want that. However. I think if somebody is going to go buy ag district, they can afford the special use from it.
Right now you can build an accessory building on any vacant land with a special use.
And it's allowed right now.
But why should our citizens have to pay seven hundred and fifty dollars for that?
Why does it have to be seven hundred and fifty dollars? Why not just give it to them for free?
That's the cost to the township.
We have to put it in the paper.
We have to advertise.
Three hundred and some dollars in the paper. We have to pay the zoning administrator.
Okay, so, uh, let's, uh.
I could, I could, I could negotiate that.
So if we just had it in the ag, you would be.
Special use. Keep it the same in residential, change it to ag without special use. You want to make motions?
So basically, if you live on a lake, you won't have a, nobody's going to build between you.
Unless you have a special use.
No, I will. There will be no buildings on vacant lots in the.
Well, right now you can.
You can't do it in R. You can only do it in that.
But I just read it and said you could.
So just leaving in, uh, in that one portion where it's a special use, it might be exclusionary zoning.
So this is our, our one.
That's only, we only find that on R one and R two.
And you get over a hundred.
Oh yeah, I had a lot of people. I mean, anybody can look at it. On Grand Junction now. I just put in, how do you feel about that? But that's a hundred out of twenty-five. I mean, we have got to figure out a way to get people's input.
People don't unless they're upset about something. Other than that, they don't care.
Well, they really don't care if they don't think we listen to them.
Well, it's, it's, it didn't say.
I, I, what I'm not sure of is if that change is significant enough that it triggers. Uh, restarting of the text amendment process. We, we can make minor changes to that. Here at the board level after it's gone through all the process, but I don't know if, I'll have to check with Tasha candidly to see if. That recommended. Revision by the board triggers it to get kicked back to the PC for starting the process over.
Can we maybe make a motion to that regard if it passes the zoning administration's? Regulations, uh.
Here, did you find that?
What one?
What you were talking to Ken about.
Our one, our two and our three.
I mean, it says it in there, but I don't know what you guys.
Can I move my, um. Thing up so we can just discuss that?
What's that?
The zoning thing before we keep, we're going down all these rabbit holes.
I'm ending the agenda.
Yeah.
So. I sell real estate and I sell it in all over the place. They don't have zoning in Lee. They don't have zoning in Geneva. They don't have zoning in Bloomingdale. They have ordinances. So. I don't know which is the best way to go. I just know that we make it really difficult for people to get in here and to do things. And by doing my little survey online, a lot of people have no clue that we have this much zoning. Why are we even asking if we can do these things? Now, it does have purpose. We don't want to look like some other places. But I feel like we have to start from, from one. And figure out what we're going to do here. We do have a lot of different districts. We have the lakes, which are treated differently than our subdivision. So we do have a lot going on and I will. You know, I, I agree with you on that. I just, is there a way? To make this simple? And Kurt may know. I mean, is there a way to make this, this simple or are we? Is all zoning like this?
You want to do away with zoning?
I'm just saying, is there a way to, you know, start over? And make it simpler.
Or I guess, if that's the thought process. I would look at, um. Like Geneva, what do they have? They have no zoning, but what are you for? If you have to have orders to destroy everything and, you know, I know Nancy runs a tight ship over there. You're never going to see. You know, stuff over there that shouldn't be. So.
And I think Bloomingdale did ordinances, but. We don't have any less, we don't have any less.
Back in the day, when I was selling real estate, I was broke. It's like, well, you can't put it here, go to the township.
Yep, I've had that conversation.
Used to be. I don't know if that's true anymore, but.
And maybe it's time to just to start over and start doing our master plan again. And really getting some advice from everybody.
Well, that being said, you can always ask the. Like Southwest Michigan Planning Commission to step in and help with your master plan. Get some people that, you know, they do that for a living.
Well, Arlington Township had them do their master plan.
You know, and it's been, it's time for our review anyhow. But we don't even have people on the planning commission.
When is it coming up?
This year, twenty-five. And it was done during COVID and I think, um, somebody on the board had it in. But, you know.
And this was kind of all triggered because. What, in twenty twenty? The board paid somebody eight thousand dollars to redraft our ordinances because they were confusing. But then the draft ordinances that were paid for were even more confusing and you had inconsistent setback numbers. And so. The PC embarked on this journey of trying to go through this hundred and fifty page document. The PC embarked on this journey of trying to go through this hundred and fifty page document to go. This is inconsistent. We need to fix this. This shouldn't be in this section. It actually needs to be in this section. And so. It's been a long process. Like, I, I don't know that I agree with ditching all zoning. I'd have to know more about it. I do think our ordinances are way too complicated. They're almost impossible to understand and they're too restrictive. So I could get behind anything that, that fixes those three things. Um. Whether we just blast zoning altogether, I don't know if that's right, but. If there's a way, if there's a way to have a very simple. Fifteen page document for your ordinances that our citizens can clearly understand and they accomplish what we want. Why do we need to overcomplicate it?
We start with why, what do we want zoning for? And then work backwards. Why do you want zoning in this township? Why do the citizens, why would the citizens want zoning in the township?
I can tell you in the other four, in other townships. The reasons that they have zoning. Is so. Uh. Like John Shear. And, um, here in the township. She's got a three hundred and fifty million dollar home. Next door. There's a old, broken down mobile home trailer that's sitting there. Junk cars all around. That's what zoning prevents.
So it protects the millionaires?
It protects everybody.
Oh, okay. Well, we also, and I, that's a good point. Um, I don't know why he didn't buy the trailer then and help this guy find someplace else if he didn't want someone, you know, living like that. Um. I think the other thing that I have noticed personally is everything's about the four hundred thousand dollar houses around here. We have citizens and we have taxpayers and we have elderly people that cannot afford that. We are not making it. Jason, do you agree with me?
Hundred percent.
We have, we are not making it easy for those people and it, they need a safe. Clean, nice place to be, you know, even if it only is five hundred square feet. Small and poor does not mean blight. And I just don't think that, we say. The fire department doesn't have affordable housing here. We can't get anybody on the fire department. And the next breath, we say unless you can afford four hundred thousand dollars, you're not living here. There's gotta be someplace where we can do both of these things.
A good start to be, you know, spend a lot of money doing this housing study for the whole county. Every single municipality, um, we just got like two months ago, every municipality is wrote down like. It will stay there. I, I have a copy of it. Longview Township needs. X number of this, X number of that, type of people that are very, very. I mean, you read it, it's like, wow, where did you get all this information? It was garnered from, uh, like taxes, but. Subscriptions to certain magazines, all this kind of stuff was looked into as a type of people that you have living here and what do they want? And it says you need X number of rentals, you need X number of duplexes. And, you know, that's something that, um, you know, we need to get to, to you guys and share.
Yeah, and that's what I mean. And, and I'm not saying, I know we're not gonna blow up zoning, but we definitely need to stop. And figure out what are, what we want, what do our citizens need, and then work backwards.
I mean, when we have seventeen requests come in for either a barn dominium or a tiny home or building an accessory building on a vacant lot. There's a need out there or at least a desire out there.
And maybe you can build a barn dominium for two hundred thousand dollars. That would be great, you know. We sold one in our agency for a million dollars. That you can build a nice barn dominium for two, affordable housing and, and it'd be a barn dominium or a small house. So I just think.
Somebody off the street.
And Jason has been actually asking for that for years. You know, can we put up, even on his own property? And we keep saying, no, no, no. So he wants to do a mission and put small houses and help people with a hand up and, and go to the next step. And, and the township says no. So how can we start working for that? Do we have lots of lake property? And, and people that have million dollar houses? Absolutely, and thank you for that. But we also have, we have this and we have this. There's not a lot of middle ground.
We have people that. Who need to pay their taxes that are less than five hundred dollars and, and need payments because.
I was gonna say, I'm, I'm helping people, or not, I'm not helping people, but people are making forty dollar payments, you know, and their tax goes only five hundred and some dollars, but they can't afford it. They're trying. So. I'm just saying, I think we need to, to. Look at all of our citizens.
Master plans calls for expansion and what was the word I was reading? For the, for the residents, uh, promotes. Promotes. I don't know what you're in.
Well.
Development, promotes the development. Well, if you don't allow these things, it's not gonna develop.
Well, I think that's been the plan. I think there's a big pool here. Not allowed development of any kind, which I think our citizens have said, they want. Some growth, but not like blow up. Metropolitan.
Right, right.
Well, we don't have enough money for our fire department. Bloomingdale, they have the school, they have stores, they have restaurants, Bangor. Restaurants, stores, you know, and we don't allow anything in here. We have no revenue then.
Right.
So, I mean, we just really. This is it.
You know, I mean.
Back in the day, they were six.
So this is a bigger problem and that was my, that's my.
It's like cleansing right now.
Need infrastructure.
Okay.
Need what? Well, let's, uh, let's move on this somehow. I mean, I don't know what. Uh, maybe, uh.
Um, so my dissolving zoning, are you not gonna suck at me on that?
No.
I mean, do you wanna make a motion to get with the Southwest Michigan Planning Commission? Do you, do you wanna vote on these amendments?
Well, I mean, even that, we don't even have a planning commission, do we? You haven't appointed Jason. He's the only one on our board that'll do it. I sure wants to do it. You don't want her. He, you're gonna apply today. I mean, we got, we can't, we're expecting these people to do something. We don't even have a full. Planning commission. I mean, our, our, we're just unrealistic. I asked two people to be on the planning commission. I got two absolute no's. So, I mean, it's not a desirable position here.
No, it's not.
Well.
Sorry, Frank.
No.
Is he running yet?
Uh, okay, so let's, 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 let's make a motion. And what do you have on there so far, so far, Kara?
Uh. I had to send accessory billing text minute back to the planning commission with specific direction from the board. But then it kinda changed to approve the tax amendment with the revision. Of like the ag district for the vacant. Lots.
Well, right now you already have the district. You wouldn't have to do anything.
But you still need a special use.
Special use.
You still need a special use.
Ken, do you think we can solve the planning commission problem? Soon, so that the planning commission could be properly constituted and we could actually pick up the master plan. For twenty twenty five and sort of take a fresh look at all this, like step back and go. What does our township need, which is kind of the whole point of reviewing your master plan after five years, but if, if there seems to be this sentiment that. Our ordinances are not working for us right now. They're not working for our citizens. Now's the perfect time to do it because we have to review the master plan anyways. But Mary's point is correct, like we don't have a functioning PC right now. So. Maybe we're getting the cart ahead of the horse on all these things about, I mean, we can, we can certainly call a vote on these, these issues. I, I think we should allow barn dominiums tomorrow.
I am willing to sit down with anyone at any time to discuss this.
Why can't we discuss it now?
You and Sarah wanna sit down with me sometime, I'll sit down and talk to you about where we're at and why I'm doing what I'm doing.
Well, this is.
And if you don't want, I mean, I, you don't have to, I mean.
Well. We're kinda jumping all over the agenda, but this gets to the point of like attorneys at the meeting because. We are required to put someone from this legislative body on the planning commission and they currently aren't, there is no one. So we are, we are. As a township, supporting an improperly constituted planning commission because you won't put anybody on it.
Well, no, I made an offer to put somebody on it. It got turned down, no vote.
Okay.
So then you move on to the next person.
I don't have a next person.
Sure you do. We've got two letters of interest.
Yeah, carryover people.
And they've carried over people.
Frank.
So, it's not a problem. And. According to MTA, and I really don't wanna bring this up right now without getting, I'm being forced to because of actions. If a person. On the board, reference, uh, ex officio or any other member feels. And I think the terminology was overwhelmed or unwilling to. Do their duties. The board can do that. So, that's all I'm saying.
Isn't it true that as it stands, that these two are holding over?
That's right.
Because nothing has changed that. They have not been replaced.
That's right.
So, are we fully constituted? I guess that's my question. I know that it should be cleaned up, but can't you still function in the capacity that?
The ex officio as a holdover is debatable.
Right.
Per our attorney. I don't think. That position is, that position's not debatable. It just says, a member shall hold over until they are replaced, period. There are some legal reasons why the ex officio is debatable on that. Ken's already expressed his opinion on that as well. But that doesn't, we're talking about holdover though. The bigger issue is. Our supervisor is required to put someone from this board on the planning commission. It's not, it's not a may, it's a shall. And, and I know you have your reasons for not putting me on there, but. You're not, you, I don't know. I, I think it's personal because you don't like that I like these tax amendments that you don't like. I mean, two months ago, Ken, at one of these meetings, you said I was doing a great job on the planning commission. Why wouldn't you not want me back on the planning commission?
So you're doing a great job with Vesper.
Okay. Okay, sorry.
Well, that's only one item, what? It only makes just plain common sense. That since you were on originally and had all the interaction with Vesper. And you are part of all those meetings with them concerning this. Pretty relevant, you have more knowledge than anybody else because you were in with it. And talked with the attorneys and everything else. It only makes sense to reappoint me. Because you already have the knowledge. Because that comes back to putting new people on the planning commission all the time. And then you say the planning commission doesn't get anything done because. There, there's no continuity. There's always new people. There's, there's no continuity. You can't get things done without continuity.
Can't imagine why people don't wanna be on this.
And, and then, yeah, then, no, so, oh, nobody wants to be on any of these commissions. Nobody wants to sit on the boards. Yeah, I wonder why. I hate to say it, but the inviting should stop. There's no reason for it.
This is obstruction, right?
The what?
It's obstruction.
It is. It is. Okay, so let's do something here. This is gonna go on forever. So Kara, Kara, do you have a, a motion for anything on here to?
Uh, I don't.
Come on, put your wisdom to the work.
I mean, do we need to table anything, everything until we have an attorney show up at the meetings and so we can get through this?
Might not be a bad, a bad call.
For lack of a better, better understanding from everybody, I would move that we table this. Until, uh, our next meeting. And I would also recommend that we have either by Zoom or in person, have the attorney here. Because I'm, I'm, I'm just plain tired of having all these comments made. And opinions.
I think we need the attorney here, Gary, because we're giving different advice to everybody. They need to sit right there.
That's exactly right.
We can all hear the same thing.
Exactly right. The last, uh, Dorset Swift attorney bill was seventeen hundred dollars.
Who knows what the next one will be?
All right, second.
So is the motion just to table or is the motion to table and have the attorneys at the next meeting?
Motion to table and have the attorneys at the next meeting.
For the next.
Sorry, we have to be specific about what we're tabling. Are we tabling just this or what, what are we tabling?
All three, all three text.
All three tax amendments?
Table. Uh, L one, L two, L three, which is the vacant lots, the foundation change. And the text minute regarding mobile homes removing the additional.
Did you update the agenda? I have different.
Yeah.
I don't have L one.
Sorry, I changed it to the.
Okay, so we're tabling, we're tabling the board's vote on the text amendments recommended by the PC. Until next month, when the attorney can be here to advise.
I think the verbiage has to be postponed, isn't it, instead of table, Kara?
Postpone, yeah.
Motion to postpone. Tax amendment changes.
Right.
Until next, until next regular meeting.
Correct.
And have attorney present. Well.
You're postponing N one, two?
I'm postponing the vacant lots, the foundation change in the. Um, what's the next?
Barn dominium?
The barn dominium, I guess.
Getting rid of M three, right? Get rid of M one.
We have different numbers now or letters, Ken.
I updated it. So I'm getting rid of those three.
You need to go down and get, uh, the next one. M one. Township Board of Reckoning, Planning Commission priorities.
But we don't need a postponer.
Well, they're not gonna make any recommendation tonight if they got rid of all of that, right?
Okay.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna amend my motion.
Okay.
You can, uh. Leave the front part of it the same and take off, have the attorney present at the meeting. Cause I'm gonna make another one.
Okay. So we're postponing the tax amendment changes until the next meeting.
Correct.
You're first, anybody second?
I'll second it.
Oh, I'm not ready to running the meeting, Ken.
And these, the second, any other discussion?
No discussion for me.
Uh, motion by Gary, Mary seconded. Not a money thing, is it?
Could you please read the motion one more time?
Motion to pu- postpone the tax amendment changes until the next regular meeting.
Thank you.
Well, all in favor, say aye.
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 I would like to move. To have our attorney present at our. Home, regular township meetings. The next four meetings.
Next one is.
Um, I did talk to them today. Do you prefer Zoom or in person?
Zoom's fine.
They said Zoom would be cheaper.
Zoom, Zoom's fine.
I always like it in person.
Yeah, in person is so better. Zoom is tough.
In person.
Okay.
Gary made a motion. Do we have a second?
So it's six months, you said?
Four.
I, I said four. We can go six.
Let's go four.
I think four's a good starting.
We could always extend it.
Okay, I'll second four.
That's the money thing. Gary?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Kara?
Yeah.
Jason?
Yes.
I'll say yes.
Moving on.
Long ways to go.
That was painful.
Yeah, but we worked right through it.
We're doing good. We're gonna.
We shouldn't be considering approval of, we're sending it to the planning commission. For public hearing. If you agree with it.
You're talking about the draft ordinance, Ken?
Yeah, we're, uh, talking about. Yeah, we're, uh, township board will, this, that should be, uh, they go to the planning commission for the public hearing.
For the ordinance?
Yeah, the ordinance, uh, twenty twenty five dash zero one.
So this ordinance came from the lawyer, right?
Yes.
Okay.
At our last meet, just to get everybody remem- ref- refresh your memory, at our last meeting, we said we wanted Foster Swift to draft renewable energy. Um, ordinances for all renewables, but they didn't do wind because we're not really eligible for, not eligible, we're not likely to do a wind project. So we have that in a draft overlay district. Um, that they supplied back to this board, which the next step in the process, I believe, Ken, would be to send it to the PC. And then we do another public hearing and go through the whole approval process again on those new ordinances.
That was for solar and, uh, battery.
You solar and battery.
Yeah.
With an overlay district. So I will make the motion that we send. Those draft ordinances and overlay district from Foster Swift to the planning commission to do their thing.
I would, uh, like the. Have the township board consider a change.
Oh, sorry, Ken.
Had two of them here, I thought. Anyways, the orig- the original map had a cutout right here, and it didn't have this portion on there. And what I'm recommending is that we add that cutout and this, get that total area so that we don't have a disconnect.
Sort of L shape, add a L shape.
Correct.
This is what's in there right here. Ken, is that what you're talking about? Add, add to this one?
Yeah, we would add this parcel right here, and that other parcel's already cleaned out, but it doesn't have the parcel number on it.
Add this one here. He's got that, so he wants to make.
Let me, uh, go grab the.
Who wants to make, uh?
Right here.
This right here.
Plus this.
From here to here. No, no. This, this area, yeah, here.
Is that, is it gives more frontage along the, the power line?
Will give more frontage on the power line, but this parcel right here is not listed on their thing in this parcel.
Oh, no, it doesn't matter. Yeah, yeah, I got it, yeah. Okay. The only thing I see on here that is a, unless I'm reading this wrong, industrial is, right? Yeah, yeah, right, we're like, that's what McKibben, that's what McKibben has is a pay dairy store. That's the only one. That's the only.
Commercial, which is.
Yeah, yeah, but yeah. So this would be the industrial overlands then? Yeah, yeah, because of the power lines. Yeah, Karen and I looked at that the other day.
Also mark up the ordinance to add those two parcels. Markup in red, added.
Do you? Which, which drawer?
Party here.
That was the original.
Yeah, I got it here.
Were we doing, were we doing breaks, like naughty break or something? I was gonna get some more.
We take a two minute break.
Yep. Let, let me find. It's overtime.
Me.
There you go. I heard my name, I'm like, it's gotta be over there somewhere.
Like, like eighty percent or ninety?
Oh, no, it would be high. That's what we have in there now.
And then also. You're saying one furnace is supposed to shoot?
Right, so they said that it would just be easier and more effective.
But, but the thing with this, it might not be warmer, cause you know how like a lot of large houses have two furnaces because the, the. The thing, low, the air is far, and since that building is what, like, I don't know, under city lawn, maybe one furnace can't blow it.
They get the right size and it's zone. So like, the one area we call for heat, heat it up. The other area we call, like, my house is very small, actually, but it's zoned upstairs, downstairs. So, the furnace will kick on, heat the downstairs shut off. Then the upstairs turns south, saying, no, I need to be, and then the furnace will kick on and blow upstairs.
So the floor would be, um, forceful and not be ordered to go a hundred feet?
The, the lou- the louver itself, yes, the louver itself is, is just changing where the airflow goes.
I thought that that's the reason why a lot of houses have two furnaces.
Well, if it's.
I, my, I've never been in a house with two furnaces.
If it's a single furnace, it'll be regulated by the number of BTUs and the fan unit should, should be, uh, released to accompany that. They're not gonna put a smaller fan unit into a furnace, it's a lot more.
But it's easier zoning too. You got two different zones, you don't need to be that high.
Well, yeah, but that's gonna be adjusted.
And with a B A V box.
But I mean, that would be something to look into, cause I mean, you need to get a furnace in there and then it doesn't change the other end.
Well, that's probably why we're gonna get more.
We were just talking about furnaces, already contacted those two we talked about, the email, I've already got, uh, a point on Thursday at some point with.
Me.
Me.
They're right next to the racetrack, and I'll tell you, they, they're the only ones that would come and do an after hours call for us, the only ones.
Oh, then you could, you could text them via this. I'm like, I'm not gonna text you, I'm gonna send you a request, I don't wanna body right now, but. Yeah, we already got that set up, so, rock and roll.
Jason, you still have in the Bay area, you still have those, uh, yeah.
Two different ones.
Yeah.
What happened to the other one of these?
Yeah, this is mine.
But there are times we do this, it's changed on you.
We're gonna be done here in a bit.
Print it again?
Yeah.
Just here.
There's nothing.
Did you have the other one?
I sent it back your way. Kara put it down there. I think she folded it though.
This is mine, I brought it from home.
Did, you got the other one? Did I take it with me?
You didn't find the other one, I thought. You said you couldn't find it.
No, I found it.
Oh.
I found the other one, then I lost it.
I had this printed a while ago.
We had it.
I am gonna say the.
Does anyone see this?
Wait, can't find the map?
So I hand it to you, you folded it, set it on his computer, right?
Under your computer?
Well, this is the, the original one.
For a map?
He's got it.
Alright.
Okay, the only things I changed. Was I added the acres. The acres to the address.
Okay.
Acre to the address. Then I added this other piece of parcel, that was nineteen point seven acres. And then I added another parcel that's seventy six point four acres, and then I. They had, uh, about, uh, revision to the, uh, map would be included right here. And I said that it would be attached as exhibit one. So this would be attached as exhibit one. That's the only changes I made to it, is I, I was looking at it and said, nobody's gonna do anything with those other lots.
Seems right.
No.
And where does that go?
Which thing?
This will be going to the planning commission for consideration.
So, so I needed to know where it was gonna go.
It's gonna go to, to her. If you wanna prove that one, or if you wanna stay with the attorneys, which, then this would go with her.
Alright, where are we at now? Cause I don't think my letters are right anymore.
Uh, you made a motion to send it. As written from the lawyers to the planning commission.
Sorry, since he had a couple, I didn't realize he had a couple amendments, so I'll say send it with amendment, with Ken's amendments, or suggestions, additions, sorry.
So, you're first. Motion to send draft ordinances from Foster and Swift with additions to the planning commission to do their job. That sounds weird. Just, I'll take out the last part, to do their job, on the state to the planning commission. To process, yeah.
So we need a second.
Oh, Ken, we have a second, we have a first and a second.
This is for which one?
The ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero zero one.
It'd be zero zero one and zero zero two, right, Kara?
Uh, I think zero zero two is a separate.
I think you need a separate motion to adjourn.
Okay.
So, who, who made the motion?
Jason.
Jason?
Second.
Mary's second. Fairly say aye?
Aye.
Aye, it's Carrie. Uh, the next one is, uh, ordinance, uh, twenty twenty five dash O two to regulate, uh, solar energy systems.
I'll make the same motion.
I have a question.
Don't.
We can second it, but I have.
No, no, go ahead, sorry.
So is this saying that if somebody wanted to put a solar panel on their garage, they can't without permission from the township?
No, they can still do that.
Private solar system attached.
Up to fifty megawatts.
This is only commercial, so if I wanna become Amish, I can do that.
You second it then, is that what you said?
Sure, I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, it's Carrie. Yeah, we got, uh, we're gonna consider approval of a recommendation to, of, uh. David Marshall Lady. For the zoning board of appeals.
No, we switched the order on the one.
Yeah, this is in the order. We're going over the dates. Twenty twenty five, resolution twenty twenty five zero zero two to approve meeting dates for the township board.
And the planning commission dates.
The planning commission dates are there.
So they'll still be on the third Tuesday in the month, except for the month of December and planning.
I, I think I didn't do that. I think I talked to Mary, we're gonna keep it on the, uh.
This is Christmas Eve.
On the third.
I had, uh. I had a concern with the closures of the township bottle.
I think that's the next item.
That's the next one.
Where, where, where are we here?
We're on the meeting schedule.
Meeting schedule.
One.
O two.
Oh. Resolution O two?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You gotta keep up with Kara.
Okay.
Um, those look correct. Uh, second Tuesday.
That's for planning, yeah, second Wednesday.
Or second Wednesday's planning, third Tuesday's is board.
Right.
Uh, that's all that's in that resolution, correct?
Did you need to make a change to that?
You needed to get rid of the December one that says we're gonna hold it on the second Tuesday of the month because we're doing it on the third. All of them are gonna be on the third.
Alright.
So you just need to get rid of, uh. Tuesday of the month and put a period, and get rid of the except.
Okay.
Wait, December sixteenth is the third Tuesday.
Yes, I, I just need to erase that.
There's a note at the bottom about why we're, why we're meeting on the, uh, second Tuesday of the month, which we're not.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
I copied last year's to make this one. You got, uh, the last one highlighted there, it should stop after that.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution. With corrections.
I second that motion.
Mary, Jason? Got me lost on my paper. This is for, uh, all of you, right?
I like to make things.
I, I have a. Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's Carrie. This one is the township board will consider approval of dates, so the township will be closed to the public, resolution twenty twenty four O three.
Concern is one, uh, Christmas. Rest of them look fine, but Christmas, you got through January fifth. And I don't see any reason why that can't be. January, I think it's second. Twenty twenty six, because.
I think because the second's a Friday.
That's Friday is the second, and then you got Saturday and Sunday to be off anyway. So why go to the fifth?
Because otherwise you're just coming back for one day on a Friday.
No, 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 through, through January second.
Are you looking at, oh, twenty six or twenty five?
I'm looking at twenty six. Oh, wait.
What are you saying is, I mean, his calendar?
No, I'm looking at twenty six. I'm looking at twenty six.
Right, if we stay open through the second, that's Friday.
So I just say, change it to the fourth and that's a Sunday? I don't know.
The fifth is?
A Monday.
So.
Yeah, he's saying if you write fifth, you're saying you're closed on the fifth.
Yeah, you're closed on Saturday and Sunday, so.
So we're not normally open, are we normally open Saturdays?
No.
Okay, so then you could just say through the second, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Good job, Gary.
Yeah, right.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty four oh three with the correction.
A second.
Mary, you're all fair say hi.
Hi.
Nice, Gary. Township board will consider approving the resignation of
uh.
Well, they'll consider approval of supervisor appointment to the planning commission Frank Gubisus Junior.
Um, wait a minute. We wanted to change, the agenda was changed to.
Anita?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Should do that first.
Yep.
We'll make a motion to approve the resignation of Anita Manlon from the planning commission to accept your resignation.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Hi, scary. They did a motion to, uh, supervise appointment of planning commission Frank Gubisus Junior.
For what seat?
Pardon?
For what position?
I think we were, uh, sheriff. Three years.
She's a carryover. I think, I think in all fairness to Frank, I think he should take over the one that was resigned because that is actually open. And it will give him a chance to have get a speech left, get, uh, oriented with the board. And, uh, he'd be on there for a year and a half or a year, whatever it is. And, uh, to get him a little bit more acclimated.
Do you have the period?
I think that would be.
Do you have the period for Anita's?
It would be through the end of this year.
This year.
This.
Twenty twenty five.
Yeah.
Will that be from the date of us taking the oath of office to December?
Twenty five.
Thirty one, twenty twenty five. That's the money thing. Oh, wait a minute. Oh, period. I made a motion, Gary, altered it. Do we have a second?
I'll second it so we can open it to discussion.
Open for discussion.
Um, yeah, I know, I know you had a chance to come in and meet a couple of the people. I haven't had a chance to talk with you, so, um, one question I wanted to ask is why you'd wanna be on the PC? And after you viewing all of this, I really wanna know the answer to that now.
Yeah, I'm thinking twice about it too myself.
Well, I mean, you see, you see what we're dealing with, so.
Yeah, I'm a, I'm a little bit, I've been in the trades long enough and know, you know, a lot of things I like to listen here and listen to people, what they wanna do, but I also, you know, I am a homeowner on the lake and know and see what's going on in Michigan and it's, you know, it's some different, but down, way up. Yeah, there's, there's quite a few issues here, you know, enforcement for one, just, you know, I might be out of our realm, that part, but yeah, then maybe working with the Midwest planning mission and get something else going too with the bus and rock. And I'm, I'm open for congestion and some running term that I'm jumping into. I know about codes and not yours exactly, but you know, how that works and.
Um, a couple of things that I've kinda picked up in conversation or emails is you've recently moved back to the area?
I've been here since probably sixty seven. I'm not living here, but a lot of times, but.
Okay.
You know, and so I do have a lot of I like to, I like the land, so.
Okay.
Just saying, sorry. Yeah, I, I, yeah, I moved back there, yes. I have a, a voter now, then driver's license. Still have a home in, um, countryside, but
okay.
This would be my president's here about to put it.
And I guess my last question, since we've ripped a lot of Band-Aids off tonight and you, you kinda see what we're dealing with, um, I, I would love to know kind of the nature of your relationship with Ken. I've, I've sort of heard that you guys are fishing buddies. And obviously, there's nothing wrong with being fishing buddies, but uh.
I never officially.
Oh, really? Okay, well, then that's an ugly rumor.
That is, I, yes. When I see him on the pier, I'll go by show, so I.
Okay.
Show up.
Okay.
No, he, he was, um, close friends with my father. So, I mean, that's, yeah, they, they were, they were fishing.
I'll, I'll be transparent as to the reason I asked that. I think it's relevant, important. Supervisor gets to appoint whoever he wants to the PC, obviously. Um, and given what you kinda heard today, my concern is that we get people on the PC that are independent thinkers and don't necessarily aren't steered by one particular course of thought. So that's the reason I ask.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm independent.
Okay.
Yeah, and that'd be for, you know, if you read with, with people's block of minds. But I know what I see was going on here and behind me where I live.
You live on Saddle Lake?
Yeah. We, we need zoning, we need, we need help.
He lives next to Saddle Lake, Subdiver.
That's my neighbors.
Okay.
I've never been back there lately, but.
I, yeah, try not to.
Yeah.
So my concern, Frank, is, um, we have another lake person. We have nobody representing ag, we, you know, nothing against you, but we don't have anybody representing. Everybody's on the lake, aren't they?
I think Dave represents ag, right?
Dave, Dave does.
David, Trevor's not like, is he?
Trevor's, I don't know where Trevor is.
Trevor's not like, he's on eighteen five.
He lives out by Dave.
And that if, you know, that you are open, even if it's against what you think, we have to do what the sort of, the majority rules.
Yeah, I, I, I get it, but yeah, I'm, I'd like to put my two cents that has some of the, you know, taking away kind of your rights, just, you know, property owner, when you're not notified and stuff like that, it's, that's a, that's a.
Well, and some would feel taking your rights if you have to follow something that's, you know.
Correct.
You own your property and a lot of people have the attitude, they should be able to do it what they feel necessary. So I feel like what you're saying is.
But on lake property, I know it's a little different.
Lake property is different.
Given that we just popped the top on potentially like looking into the whole issue of ordinances and zoning at all, I'm just curious what your thought is of our current ordinances? Like, what, how, how would you classify that?
They're complicated, like you said. They're, they're too complicated and, you know, you need some address there, but yeah, and you don't, you know, but you gotta think about the ag and how much property there is on the lake and, and when you see what people build out here and when they're building on a lot that they're not even attached to, to, to a, an outbuilding. That's a little tough. You gotta look next to that and you didn't know that that was gonna be built. I mean, I know about houses, but I don't talk in a, a park, parking vehicles. That's a little tough. And then I see we have no, um, we can't enforce anything. I mean, that'll be a business next year before you know it. They'll be pulling Bobcats and trailers in there for ten years. I see it already around.
Yeah.
No, I'm gonna run last, I see it. So, I mean, a barnumian, maybe, yes, but an outbuilding, a property that's just behind you, just cause it's open and maybe they own another piece or they can build a barn. That really changes your property.
Would you rather have two, um, semi-trailers with wheels sitting there and people put their crap in that?
Yeah, but I don't think.
That a custom-built full barn?
Yeah, I, I, I don't see that happen. And I see it in a few places, but I.
I don't see somebody on a lake having somebody build something between them. I feel like if there's two lake properties and there's an empty lot, those people will buy that. One or the other.
Sometimes it's, it's not feasible. You, you don't know about that property and then, yeah, I mean, yeah. Good. But that might subdue the cracks and but, you know, a residence on property like that, but I'm saying, garages and barns, just on a vacant piece, no.
Because people shouldn't have a place to put their stuff in.
Get my opinion a little bit here, yeah. You know, you want to put a, you know, you wanna store vehicles and that, you know, you might wanna buy a piece of ag property and build a nice place where you can put your stuff.
Hmm.
I mean, we'll see what's going on now, what's, what's going on over on Saddle Lake right now.
And that has nothing to do with zoning.
Right.
That's cause we didn't.
Yeah, but you came in to force him putting a sign on there that's saying he's got a business. And I know he's running machines everywhere now, so.
So we can't enforce that, I mean, we shouldn't do it.
Yeah, well, but without zoning them.
The Wild West.
So that's, 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 who's in charge of enforcement?
The, uh, the only, I, I, we talked on the phone and I appreciate you calling. That was nice. Um, and I know you were busy with your moving and up here and stuff. Now, the, the, the home that you have here, was that your dad's?
The, the home was my dad's and I have another smaller home.
Oh, okay, yeah.
On the same property.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we're on the, on the same property.
Okay, okay.
Well, I would actually.
Oh, you have two residents on one parcel?
No, 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 that's.
Oh, oh.
About three acres. I think he's building. Maybe always.
You might wanna.
Yeah, it's okay.
My proud grandfather did, so don't worry about it.
Yeah, I, I, I think I would, yeah.
How did you, how did you, uh, find out about, uh, or hear about the, uh, planning commission spot?
I was, I was, I'm going to some of the meetings and I went to a meeting the, the couple of times. Uh, the last time was, they had like a seven morning meeting. I was headed out, I just thought I'll stop in there. And then I talked to Lining and I heard there was maybe a position. And then at that other meeting, I think you were there, Jason, at that, um, I don't, what, what meeting was that in the morning?
No, he was.
No, I think it was.
Our, um, board of review.
Oh.
Board of review.
Yeah.
So then I heard there was an opening there and I says, yeah, I might be interested in moving up here and I, uh, yes.
Oh, so you moved up here to be on the planning commission?
No, no, no.
Oh, like, wow. I'll give it to you for effort then.
He's planning on retiring and he still has.
Oh, I'm, I'm.
Illinois.
I will retire.
And, and, uh, and he's just relocating here and he's got residence here and stuff, so he's on the voters list and everything else.
Yeah, he's a registered voter. So we do have, um, you do realize, there's a citizen planner that they want everybody to go to when you start. So it's, uh,
Can't be.
I mean, we'll pay for it, but we, I think that was one of the last things they said is they want everyone, all the planning to go to that.
I, I, yeah, I would most definitely love to take some.
It's probably.
And you're a builder by trade?
No, it's electrician by trade.
Electrician.
Packing at first, electrician for forty years.
Okay.
I went up at a lot of.
Okay.
That's why he's gonna retire, cause his knees are giving out, his arms.
Okay.
Okay, I'm good. Uh, thanks for, yeah.
Okay, so, well. So the motion's been made to approve him through December thirty first, twenty twenty six, and has been a second.
So we just need to vote twenty five?
Twenty five. Oh, twenty five, sorry.
You read it one more time, I'm sorry.
Motion to approve Frank.
Gubisus.
Thank you, to the planning commission through December thirty first, twenty twenty five.
We made the motion.
For Anita's.
Gary.
For this.
Or, I have to make, I have to make.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
I already made the motion if I remember right, and then we went to discussion.
Okay.
And so I need second.
So wait, what's your motion there?
We already seconded.
I seconded it and opened it to discussion. So it's been, it's been motioned, seconded, it needs to be voted on.
Okay. This is money, so let's, uh, me first, yes. Mary?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Kara?
Uh, yeah.
Congratulations.
Now, you got.
Uh, Dave Mars.
Now come on up here and get punched in the face.
We're on the meetings.
We're a football home.
Yeah.
Um, I'm in a mission.
I thought it was be hardy.
I have a bed.
One day it will be, one day it will be.
No.
Oh.
The party follows.
Township board will consider the approval of supervisor recommendation to appoint a member of the planning commission to the zoning, uh, board of appeals. Uh, two members are available for appointment, Dave Marcelotti. He's got two and a half years and completed the US Michigan State University Court for Citizens Planner. The other one is Trevor Phillips and he has been on the planning commission for less than a year and has not taken the course. At the last meeting, the appointment, uh, recommended failed for lack of a second, second, so I'm making the same motion. I think other people thought there was a group of people that could be picked. There's only two. I'm making the motion. Can I get a second?
What's your motion?
My motion, what's written down?
Just, just for board of, uh.
Zoning board of appeals. They, they, they meet less than twice a year.
And wasn't Peter on this as well?
No.
No, this would be, uh, uh.
Oh, this is, uh, this is.
Lee and.
Zoning board of.
Zoning board of appeal. That's where you have Lee Dixie's on it and, uh, Chuck.
Chuck. So, moving to appoint Dave Marcelotti, certified MSU citizen planner in two and a half years on the planning commission to zoning board of appeals.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Gary.
Who's coming up, who's coming on?
Anita resigned.
Oh, oh, oh.
Replace Anita.
No, 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 no. This is zoning board of appeals.
She was on the board of appeals.
Okay.
So he, he is gonna replace Anita on the board of appeal.
As the planning commission. Right.
They meet twice a year.
No, I, I under, I know what they do.
Okay.
I just wanna make sure it's the zoning board of appeals.
Yeah, that's what.
Zoning board of appeals.
I, I.
It's all right.
Was I seconded?
You did.
Oh. I just dropped my second.
You just wanna trigger. Um, thank you, Gary. Can I get a second? Hey, this little fail for, uh, lack of support.
Ken, you wanna talk about why on that? Or do you wanna move on?
What's that?
Do you wanna talk about why on that, or do you wanna move on?
Oh, I don't think, uh, either it's because I know him or it's because you don't like what he says in the planning commission. Or both.
Well, I, I would, I would alter that slightly and say, we're kinda stuck between a rock and a hard place because we don't have a full planning commission, so he's, he's the only option, so to speak. So it's sort of like we have a gun to our head to approve him.
If you appoint anyone else, you're not gonna get two and a half years' experience and you're not gonna get somebody that's already taken to Michigan.
Yeah. I, I will tell you that my reservation about Dave from being on the planning commission with him is based on a number of things that he's said. I, I feel like he is not an objective party at an appeal, like he, I believe he would shoot down every appeal just because he doesn't like anything to challenge the ordinance.
Dave, Dave is really not, he, he'd like, he said he'll come do it, he'll do the best job that he can on it. He understands what the job is. And if somebody else gets on there that gets experience in that, he would be more than happy to trade their place. But right now, he's the only one we got.
Well, the reason I withdrew my second was because I had a flashback when he said he voted for something on the, uh, on the board of, uh.
On the PC?
On the PC board. On the PC board. For it, but he didn't know.
He didn't understand.
He didn't understand what he was voting for. And I'm thinking, that's, that's not good. I mean, he, he wrote it down. He said that's what he did. So that.
What, what, I think what you're talking about, he thought sending it to the county was not the final vote. From the Planning Commission to go to the Township Board. That's what he said he thought when he did that, and that's why he sent a letter saying that, hey, I thought that. When I voted for that.
I know.
Well, he's being honest.
Well, fine, but he, okay.
Well, is, is there another scheduled, uh, ZBA meeting at this point?
Nothing.
They don't get scheduled until there's a problem.
Yeah, and I'm only an alternative.
Okay. I mean. I mean, I can't speak for everyone else, but I'm wel, I'm willing to have a conversation with Dave personally and just kinda like see if I can get over my issue with that, cuz I just. And if I can. I, I would be willing to support that, I guess, but I just wanna make sure that he's gonna. Not carry some of the things I've heard him say onto a, a Board of Appeals, I guess.
We're supposed to be neutral, and I do appreciate Frank coming and contacting everybody. And, you know, it makes a big difference. We haven't really heard from Dave.
Exactly.
So.
Moving on.
Let's go, come on.
Okay.
Uh, Township will consider the Van Bear County Resource Recovery and Recycling Program Contract.
What are we on, O nine? Row eight?
Well, since the agenda changed.
Oh, yeah, I'm over, I, I can't tell where.
Oh, this is where we, this is where we give the contribution to the recycling tires or something?
It's for like waste tires, electronics.
Yeah, it's an annual contract that we signed.
Wasn't that seven hundred and fifty dollars?
No, that was Eagle, we gave Eagle.
Oh, Eagle, okay.
That's a five-year one.
So there's different.
I think we get to decide what amount we wanna pay. Last year, we gave them a thousand dollars because they're picking up our tires.
We gave them a thousand bucks.
Is that what we wanna do this year?
We'll maybe be picking up tires again?
I think we got four hundred out there that they're supposed to come get right now.
Thousand bucks to get rid of four hundred tires seems pretty good.
Well, there's a lot of tires. I think we went about twelve hundreds this year, tire.
Yeah, yeah, cuz we're on there for another. I mean, we're on there as, just as a.
Collector.
Collector for the, for the county, the whole county.
I'll make the motion that we approve of Van Bear County Resource Recovery and Recycling Program Contract with a thousand dollar contribution.
I will second that and just ask Ken, is that in your budget? Do you have that in your budget? Yes, okay.
Yeah. That's a money thing, Mary?
Yes.
Well, Ken, yes, Kara?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Gary? Now we're on the PC money.
PNC.
TNT, yeah. Did I add all that right?
Gosh, I don't know, Ken.
Did you, I got all the bank, I got all the banks, I added the, uh, all of them.
So this came about because it's time to, um, invest money and every bank wants it kind of a different way. This investment policy. And we are getting from PNC a scanner for the checks. I scanned, I've been there for an hour before, almost two. But then I had all the checks that were like from the. I don't know, the bank, they were all the same, same size and whatever, they did it in ten minutes, but if it's all, when we get all those little checks, that takes so long. So I ordered a scanner so I can do it for my desk because it's out there all handwritten, so this will cover that.
When you say a scanner, is that something you do, it's not something you feed the checks in?
Yep, you feed the checks in it and it.
It's just, it.
Don't they pull them, like, you put a stack and it pulls them in one at a time?
Well, I don't, I don't have it yet.
It's what they do at the bank.
No, I, I know, I know, and the bank has a big problem with it.
Yeah, but I'm really good at this, so.
Okay, okay.
So anyhow, just to offset the cost, um, I talked to him about doing a small money market. There. At PNC.
Okay.
And then with, um, Huntington, we need this verage in there so that we can.
And so the Sturgis Bank is nothing, that's gonna be?
Um, I put that in there because I will probably not be using PNC. After tax season.
Oh.
Well, we have to drive to Papa or elegant.
I know, yeah.
So, so instead of coming back here and doing this again, I just added that to it.
And this will be Resolution twenty twenty five dash zero zero four.
The score. Did, did you say scanner, is that free or we gotta pay for the scanner?
Twenty-five dollars a month.
Uh, I was gonna say, they don't give it to you free, it's like.
I think so, but I wanna know.
They're, uh.
So that's all part of the investments, the, the included in their fee, they got another fee that goes with that?
No, it's a twenty-five dollar fee.
Okay.
I wasn't asking permission for that, I was actually asking permission to do the money market. And in my head, it offsets that fee, so it doesn't cost anything.
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking. Sometimes it doesn't come out the way.
This has no connection to an issue we've discussed in the past about trying to find a higher yield.
This has everything to do with that. This is also that. That's why Huntington and PN, or PNC is also on there. So we can start investing.
I see.
But we have to get the budget done so we know cash flow.
I make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty five dash zero zero four.
You got a second?
Second.
Gary, second it, this is money. Kara?
Yes.
Ken, yes, Mary?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Jason?
Yep.
I provided you with a, is that on there, what's next, I don't know what's next here.
Uh, the dissenting opinion on selection of X.
That's just in, information for the record.
Okay.
Yep.
So you don't.
Uh, the next is the Township Board will recommend a timeline for communication between the Planning Commission and the Township Board. The Planning Commission meets three days prior to the Township Board, what is the expected timeframe for communication and who should be notified?
Tasha was asking that, uh. She gets a. The three business days plus the next Township Board meeting. So if you approve something, I shouldn't expect to get it to the following month for the board.
Hmm.
And then.
That, I don't think that, did she say why? She just doesn't have enough time?
Couldn't do it in three business days, some of the stuff, to get to the board in a timely manner.
But depending on the month, it doesn't always fall.
No, that's right.
Then, right, because. When do you guys meet?
Second Wednesday.
There, there's two, two times that she has more time.
Yesterday years, they used to have a week prior to that, so there was like two weeks in between.
Well, that's what she was asking for, I'm. Bringing it to the board if that's. Acceptable.
I don't, I don't see a problem with it.
I don't see a problem.
Oh, interesting, I, I think that seems like a long time.
You, you go like a month and a week?
Yeah, I don't.
Yeah, that's a long time.
Be thirty-seven days total and it'd be only about twenty business days.
Back a week. Their meetings.
You wanna take it back to Tasha and see if.
I, I'd be willing to, cuz I think. If, if we wanna act in timely manner, we should try to get it to the board as quickly as possible.
So. Okay, I guess I'm. Like that, so explain this to me again.
So the PC meets the second Wednesday?
Yeah.
And then the board meets the following Tuesday, so there's only three business days in between that, and Tasha's having trouble getting. All the information from our meetings to the board. So that we can address those things at our next meeting.
Okay.
So she's asking for more time, but I don't know that. Do you?
Well, normally, when she.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that would make for. Timely decisions, if decision, you know what I mean, if we recommend something to the board.
Yeah.
I, you know.
Like the battery storage issue, we had to move like this, 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 if we had to put another month delay in there.
You just move it back a week and then we can just email.
What we need to do. The first Wednesday of each month?
I don't think it probably matters to the PC, but we just approved the dates for the meetings.
I mean, I don't think there's any deliberation or anything that needs to be done on this information, right, it's just.
It depends, like, if the PC, if the PC took up us, uh, special use permit. And we approved it, it would get sent to the board, the board would either have, they would be able to take it up. The following week, or they'd have to wait another month to take it up. And I think. No, we.
Think that's fair to people coming for a special use.
So. We could try to move, move the PC meetings back, I just don't know, Tasha has seven townships, I just don't know if her first Wednesday is already taken. We could try to move it back.
Or, or you could move it further down in the months so that when we meet. It was a week or it was a two weeks before the board met, you know, like we, like the PC would meet at the end of the month.
Or you can move it after our Township Board meeting, the Wednesday after our Township Board meeting, and then that would give us the full period of time for her to get it to us. And us to have time to look at it, because you guys send a lot of stuff that's gotta be read and.
Yeah, I can, I can kick it back to Tasha if you want and figure out. Okay.
And I guess if something really got rushed, we could call a special meeting.
Yep. Okay.
We need to do the poverty exemption.
Even though I don't like it. What's the next one?
Township Board will consider approval of poverty exemption Resolution twenty twenty five dash zero zero five.
This comes from the, uh. Zoning Board of, no, the tax. ZBA.
Oh, no, it is? Nope, it's Board of.
No, Board of Review. Tax Board of Review. They're recommending this, uh, it's a ten percent, uh, over federal. Guidelines.
That's what we normally do anyway.
That's normally what we do.
But I have an issue with doing the, uh, fuller partial exemption. Uh, poverty schedule, I, I. I personally am not. Uh. In favor of doing a full hundred percent. I think there should be some kind of tax.
Aren't we? We're not doing a hundred percent, are we?
If they're a hundred and ten per, percent poverty. You know? Um. I'm gonna disagree.
You disagree? Why?
Because we just sat and talked about how people are struggling, and if they can prove that they are, I don't even like the ten percent above poverty, if they're at poverty level. I mean, we gotta look out for some of these people. We don't do like, we can't do a senior discount, that. They tried to pass that in the House and the Senate and it didn't go. So if we, right now, this is, this, this is one hundred percent poverty plus ten percent.
Yeah, but, but, and then, and then that's on that side of the coin, and the other, other side of the coin is that we don't have funds. We don't have the tax money coming.
Sorry, newbie question, if this, if they qualify, they don't pay any taxes, is that what we're doing here? Cuz I think I missed this meeting last year, I wasn't on the board yet. Hundred percent exempt of all their taxes if they prove they meet federal poverty guidelines.
Do you know how many we do of these, like?
How many did you guys approve, Dixie?
What's that?
How many of the poverty did you approve?
Oh, me, quite a few, like, I would say probably eight or so, I'm thinking of that. But you know, part of the issue in the past has been is we haven't had a procedure. And, um, they should, which we've put together a guideline, I don't know if it's been passed yet. But they need to provide a tax return or sign a statement that they do not file a tax return. We're going to get all of the documents, and if they don't supply all of the documents. They don't qualify to even come to us. So we're tightening that up.
Yeah, I know there were certain documents that you're supposed to have.
Right. And a lot, a lot of times of that, they just sign, yeah, you know, on poverty. And, and here's what my, my income is, but it's not verified, and so we need to have the verification.
Yeah, seems fair.
It does seem fair.
So is this saying in here? That the Board of Review would determine if it's one hundred seventy-five, fifty, or twenty-five percent?
It's based on their documentation, isn't it?
Based on the documentation.
Okay. So the board is just giving you guys authority to use your discretion at the time, based on the document?
Yeah, there is no discretion.
Okay.
I mean, whatever the documents come in at, and then you look at the grid and give her out, you know, what percentage is.
Okay, so it's not across the board a hundred percent. It's what the documentation dictates to you or presents to you. Is that what you're saying?
It could only be eligible for fifty percent.
Yeah, that's, yeah, okay. Okay.
I'm doing it.
Um, yeah, I would like like ten percent taken off.
We need to tighten that up.
You want the ten percent taken off?
Mm, I do, I mean, my gosh, fifteen thousand dollars a year, someone's trying to live on. And we keep raising their taxes. I mean, why are we making it harder for people that are poor?
So, no, so what you're saying is?
They get less.
They get less, yeah.
No, it's plus ten percent.
Right, so instead of like, let's say fifteen thousand, it might be sixteen thousand.
Yeah, they would get the, this, they would get this if they don't.
That's the federal.
The federal.
And we're saying.
We're saying another ten percent.
Okay, I read it wrong, I'm sorry. I'll leave it that way.
Okay, who's making a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mary made a motion, who's seconding?
I'll second.
Jason is seconding, this is a athlete of money thing, so Mary?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes, based on what?
Jason?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
And Kenzie asked, I, I did send you a, a, an email about air, air and bees. Does everyone? And that, uh, they came out and said that's a commercial business and not allowed in the residential district if you're. Classification as a single family dwelling.
Pass in the house, they were trying to add a six percent tax on that, it didn't pass on the House of Representatives, this, this last session.
This is the two thousand and fifteen lawsuit.
We just read it in the.
Just read it, okay?
Yeah.
So we're gonna do that.
Well, my, my question is, we can't enforce what we have, how are we gonna enforce this?
We're, we're not enforcing it.
I know, but if we notice something or looked at it, what are we gonna do?
Public comment.
Ready to go home?
Public comment.
Public comment.
Jason?
Jason. Casey Robertson, call five one three zero, County Road thirty-four. Resident since two thousand and one. Couple things, number one, I need to apologize for assuming. Here, I apologize for assuming. Earlier when I.
Assuming what?
Just assuming, I, 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 my assumption was a negative connotation, so I apologize for that, but I was. Very snippy in the budget review, um, more than just a little, uh, snippy. Um, I wanna let you know, if I didn't care. I wouldn't be staying here five hours a day. If I didn't care, I wouldn't still be here. Um, so, you know, I, I do appreciate everybody that's sitting up front and those that are still sitting out here as well. Because that means you guys do care. Uh, what I see, though, is we've got two different directions and there's opposing poles, they have two horses pulling different ways. One is the way we used to do things. One is the way we want to do things. Uh, and those, those, those very well can be, uh, beneficial. Uh, unless, of course, we dig our heels into the sand, I see that in other groups, uh, where, uh, there's a group of. We'll call them elderly, that don't wanna do anything with technology. I don't do cell phones, I don't do emails, you, you try to talk to me, or the new people, that, that's all they do and you can't have a conversation. So those things are a couple of the the pitfalls we face. Uh, Mary hit it on the head. Do we know who we serve? That's that's the one thing uh that I that when she said that, I I couldn't have aimed at you better than that. Do we know who we serve? Yes, we have lakes. But right across the lake, on the other side of the fire lane are crap holes that people should not be living in, and yet that's all they can afford. And so do we have rights to human beings to to push them out without trying to give them a handout? A hand, uh, not a handout, but a handout. Um I do want to just make it a a comment that appearances are everything. If it walks like a duck and it quacks like a duck, it's not a cop. Right? So if it looks like you're being underhanded, that's what you're doing. So make every effort not to do that. Um, people are not going to have help in the midst of chaos. And they're not going to help if it feels like they're going to be under attack or if it's underhanded. Um and then lastly, uh being together, all of you being together is not a meeting. Just because you're in the same room does not mean you're having a meeting. If you're talking about stuff, that means you're having a meeting. So therefore logically speaking, you can be in the same room as each other and have dinner. Just say. With ten seconds left, I would like to say, have a great night.
Dixie?
Love the board.
Oh, good.
Anyone else? Karen?
He left now, but I wanted to thank Patrick for helping Gary with the holiday decorations. I want to thank Gary for his work on squatter cases and unfun things like that. Those are difficult. Um, Jason, for your professionalism and your continuing planning and zoning now and Mary, I know you think your fiduciary responsibility very seriously and that's really what the whole board is supposed to do. Um, and trying to research citizens directly is great and the follow-up and the investment opportunities. I really didn't know what a diplomat career was, which
Ah.
That's a very good trick. Um, and I think you had in your report a willingness to, you're pitching in employees and writing resolutions and agendas, so that's great. And Ken, I do pick on you sometimes. I think you have thick skin, so I think you can take it, but I've often said, I know you work hard. And um one of the examples in here was Conservation District. You've been just kind of doing that all the time and it is a thing that helps. Each one of you does something. You're all contributing one way or another. And I just want to reach out to J C that we love you. It may not be like in every sound, but it is bad.
Karen? Ten thirteen.
Ten thirteen, but we're not done.
Oh, we got our four.
Yeah, I mean, you're already to go home. That, you've got your book, son.
I was going to say.
Any other public comment?
Yes.
Okay, crossing that uh correspondence. I got a phone call from Vesper today and uh they informed me that uh they are going to go and file with the county. And uh I believe I have to disclose that to you because it's a a vendor calling me, telling me something. And uh
You said file with the county? You mean state?
I said Vesper.
Yeah, right.
File with the state.
Called me.
Yes.
Yeah.
And had a conversation with me.
Yes.
About our overlay district and that. And I'm disclosing that. He's going to go to the state of Michigan.
Yeah, that's okay.
You said county. You said county, that's why I asked.
No, state.
Okay.
Okay, so I disclosed that.
Yeah.
I guess we're the correspondence.
Yeah.
Gary, comments?
Uh yeah, I just want to welcome.
Frank. Thank you, Frank.
Frank.
Frank? Uh, I appreciate your call. Thank you very much. Uh, as I mentioned before, Dixie and your dad helped with the with the noise ordinance and did some good comments and promoted on that, so I appreciated that. Uh, also I wanted to uh mention that uh when I took down the decorations downtown uh certain, certain one of the lights have to be on certain poles because of the the length of the wire that plugs in, so I I numbered them all. So the numbers match on the lights to go into what, on what pole, plug them in, so you don't have to worry about that. Um there was one other thing I was going to mention, I don't remember what it was, it was probably a line, so I just hope everybody has a good night and be careful going home. And uh I thank uh I thank everybody for the work that they do, even though sometimes it's uh not pleasant, but uh we can all just uh sometimes agree to disagree.
And that's one more. What happened with attorney? Did would the class action? No, it's a. Was there state?
The uh judge, the judge has got a hearing coming up at some point in time. But I don't think you're going to see that till spring.
It's going to be in NR, uh, I know where I believe he said. Going to be in Ann Arbor or Lansing?
Uh, I think it'll be in Lansing.
Lansing.
And then I think what's going to end up, they may ask for arbitration where we have to go up there and try to negotiate.
I do remember the one other thing I was going to mention on one of the light issues was up up, it's uh they filed uh in Circuit Court because there are